Good morning. Welcome to the second hearing of the committee's mining impacts inquiry. The inquiry was established to inquire into and report on the current and potential impacts of gold, silver, lead and zinc mining on human health, land, air and water quality in New South Wales. I acknowledge the Wurundjeri people, the traditional custodians on the lands of which we're meeting today. I pay my respects to their elders, past and present, and celebrate the diversity of all Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait people joining us today. Thank you for attending today's hearing. My name's Amanda Condon, I'm Chair of the Committee. Today we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders for our inquiry, including local residents and business owners and the Chief Executive Officer of Orange City Council. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants, and I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you for making the time to give evidence today. We'll be hearing from Mrs Claire Bennett from the Goldfields Honey Group. And if you could please take either the oath or the affirmation.
Yep. I swear that the evidence now about to be given may be through the whole truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yeah, I've got about a three and a half minute opening statement, if that's okay.
Please.
Good morning, Chair, Deputy Chair and Committee. My name is Claire Bennett. I am a family member and the operations manager for the Goldfields Group of Companies. I'm also the Secretary of the Central Table and Subbranch of the New South Wales Abraeus Association and a resident of the Cadia District. As invited, I'm here to give evidence into the inquiry on behalf of my family's group of companies. Metal mining has detrimental impacts on bees and consequently our food source. I will give an extremely brief overview of these effects and impacts. Land, the destruction of valuable native woodlands and endangered trees is adding more stress on beekeepers as their floral resources continue to diminish. The destruction of topsoil also destroys any ground flora essential for pollen, nectar and breeding of bees. Air, exposure to metal concentrates deposited in plants from contaminated dust leaving mine sites. Nectar is then collected from these plants and brought back to the hive. This then causes possible contamination to the honey produced from these hives. Water, the same sediment. Exposure to water contaminated by toxic metals and cyanides can affect the bees' lifespan by them drinking from contaminated tailing stams. In times of high temperatures, bees also bring water back to their hives to cool the hive. They do this by spraying the water around and fanning using their wings to cool the hive, adding to the potential for contamination of honey. Human health, potential contamination via honey. Recent end risk reports do not come to any real conclusions on bees drinking from tailing stams and the effects on bees from contaminated dust, as this has never been adequately studied. Professor Mark Taylor, environmental scientist and Honorable Professor at Macquarie University states there is no acceptable contamination to a food product. Honey aside, pollination of our food crops is the bigger factor here. One in every three mouthfuls of food depends on pollination via honeybees. Currently, the beekeeping industry is facing many obstacles, metal mining being one. The current varroa mite by security emergency another, in attempts to eradicate a pest called varroa mite. The department have identified beekeeping industries play a vital role in our nation's food security. Bees through pollination and honey products directly contribute $14 billion to the Australian economy annually. The importance can be highlighted by the recent response to the varroa incursion. Affected parties, including the New South Wales State Government, spent millions of dollars trying to free Australia of this pest. Approximately 30,000 hives have been destroyed, including thousands of our own hives. On one hand, the state government were doing all they could to eradicate varroa and support our industry, but on the other hand, are recommending mines that will be detrimental to the health of our bees. Without healthy bees, we cannot pollinate our food crops, there will be a food shortage. The recent IPC hearing in February was a waste of our valuable time and taxpayers' money. It was obvious that the approval of this mine was already determined. Not one recommendation was taken into account. The company who have spent $160 million into exploration on a new gold mine in the central west can't even keep the trees alive that they have offset planted or ensure the plastic tree guards don't blow all over the countryside, further contaminating our environment. It is evident that mining companies simply do not keep their promises and once approved, do not do their due diligence to ensure that there is no effects on the health of humans and our environment. It is a sad world that we live in, that money is more important than our health and landscape. I hope the inquiry will expose the effects of gold, silver, lead and zinc mining on human health, land, air and water. Thank you.
For questions, might I go to the Deputy Chair first?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and for preparing your submission and being here today.
Thanks.
So I understand that your submission relates to the possible effects of the mining operations on your beekeeping business.
Yep, correct.
And I understand that you're particularly concerned about dust.
Yep.
In terms of the approvals given, were there containment measures that were discussed?
So Regus have met with us over the years. Meetings have gone back and forth. Prior to the IPC hearing, we weren't taken seriously at all. Goldfields were, as of three weeks ago, the largest beekeeping company in New South Wales. In the last three weeks, we've had to destroy two and a half thousand of our hives due to the varroa incursion. After the IPC hearing and after we made our submissions and we had Professor Mark Taylor do studies and things for us, Regus took us a little more seriously and realised, they actually had a statement from them to say sorry. We basically stuffed up, we didn't realise how big a player you were, which to us, it shouldn't really matter how big a player you were. They should take everybody seriously, no matter the size of their land or interest into the mine. They have met with us a couple of times since, but they still not taking the severity of what their mine will have detrimental effects on...
So in terms of the approvals though, are there dust containment measures that are in place?
That's beyond my, I'm not sure.
Okay, because...
Not that we'll prevent the contamination of floral resources around our area for bees. There may be some measures put in place, but nothing's going to stop the...
So you're not aware of any containment measures that may be in place?
No.
So is it your submission that any business relying on floral resources such as beekeeping cannot coexist within what distance from the mine?
So we're actually, our property's located about two kilometres from the border of the mine site. But the forestry is between us and the mine site. We rent all of a large majority of the forestry sites in between us and always have. We breed our bees there, do very important works on our hives in these areas. We won't be able to coexist with that, given the recent...
I understand your concern about it. I'm just wondering if you've got any basis in terms of how far away from the mine you would need to be, what the containment measures that the mine could take would be. Because is it your submission that there can be no mine anywhere near bees? Or is it possible to work out a way that there could be coexistence if proper measures are taken?
I don't think that there's any way that they will be able to completely stop the dust. Bees fly anywhere up to five kilometres foraging for water and food sources. There's no way that we'd be able to stop a bee from flying and drinking contaminated tailing stand waters or choosing the plants that they forage, nectar on etc. In terms of, you know, the points we've been putting out there, go find some other, you know... Like, we run our hives all over New South Wales, but obviously we want to breed bees close to home and the closer to home you are, the less costs there are involved. But given the recent bushfires, floods, varroa mite incursion, land being taken away for other purposes, there isn't much vacant land for beekeepers left in New South Wales. We're a very close knit industry. We don't, we work together with our fellow beekeepers and poaching other people's land is a no-go. So if the mine goes ahead and we lose our land, what will be of our beekeeping operation and us being one of the largest? How will that then affect our food source?
So it's your opinion that the present dust contamination measures would be insufficient, but you don't really have detail about those?
Correct.
Great.
Yeah. But if, so I'm representing on behalf of my whole family today. We were given short notice to attend today. My mother's overseas and my brother John's with landline today. They, if there's any questions that I can't answer, I'll take them on notice and they would be able to better put some insight into some of the questions.
Right, thank you.
And you're most welcome to take questions on notice.
Yeah, cool.
Ms Claire?
Yeah, thanks for appearing today. And I'm very sorry to hear that you've had to destroy so many hives. It must be incredibly traumatic for you.
Yeah, it was very traumatic for my brother. The DPI's resources are stretched to its limits and he actually had to euthanise them himself.
Yes. How much, so you said two and a half thousand, what does that...
So we were running around 12,000 hives. So yeah, we're about down to nine and a half.
Okay. I wanted to just ask questions about the tailings dams specifically to begin with. So it's my understanding that there are different ways in which companies can... There's kind of best practice, which is becoming increasingly kind of world's best practice in terms of tailings dam, which doesn't involve so much the kind of contaminated water. If you like, there's different ways of doing it, something called dry stacking.
Yep.
Which I assume may be better for the bees because they wouldn't drink the contaminated water.
Yep.
Have you spoken with Regus about these in terms of options? Did you submit any of this or are you aware of that as an alternative?
Yeah, sort of. My brother John has sort of been in more depth in that sort of area. To my knowledge, any, all recommendations that we put forth to Regus were denied in the IPC hearing. So, you know, we had various recommendations into minimising the risk from the tailings dam and bees drinking from the tailing stem, none of which were considered or put into place.
One of those recommendations, I mean, even if you, it wasn't made at the time to the APC. I'm sorry, I don't have that submission in front of me. But I assume one recommendation to Regus would be to ensure that tailings dams didn't have water. If that was an option...
Yep. That would minimise some of our risk, yeah.
Yep. How did you, were you involved in, we've heard a fair bit about people's frustrations at the IPC not seeming to take their views into consideration. They've, people have said they haven't felt heard, recommendations ignored. Would you care to expand on that?
Yeah, 100%. So I spoke at the IPC hearing. At the hearing, I was representing the New South Wales Abraeus Association as the Secretary of the Subbranch. As my brother and mother were more involved with our business, they were already covering that, so I covered on a different angle. There were, the vast majority of submissions made at the IPC were against the mine. We sat there for the full two, three days, I can't remember what it was. And for them to walk away with not taking any recommendations, not putting any, you know, stops on anything or thing, I feel is just a joke and a waste of people's time. For them to not consider any of the, you know, it's one thing to approve a mine to go ahead. It's another thing to approve and not have any recommendations come out of the meeting. It seems very pointless to me of why we did it if they weren't going to even say, that's a really fair point, how can we minimise that risk? Let's put this into place to stop that.
Yeah, because potentially government members will say that it's critical state significant development, that there's a planning process, you know, that is gone through, has to go through. But the IPC process itself seems in some ways determined, predetermined, set up for a predetermined outcome.
Yep.
But there should be a way, don't you think, for the community's views to still be heard genuinely and for recommendations to be taken into account? But you seem to think that they weren't listening or prepared to listen to recommendations, is that your view?
Yeah, correct. I feel that we as the community and people that have invested interest into this going ahead put so much time, effort and money. You know, money into, the money that we contributed as a business and the Bababula Headwater Group and our community might seem like a drop in the sea to a mining company such as Regus, but to us was a lot of money to be invested. But, you know, we just feel that money talks and no matter what we had to say at that hearing, that nothing was going to be changed from what we had to say.
Yeah, the recommendations that I've seen in a number of submissions are incredibly detailed and very good. Can I ask about water? I was very alarmed to hear about Regus's plan to, what I think is to plug various springs in the headwaters of the, I mean, just extraordinary, mind blowing stuff, really. Is that really the case here in New South Wales in 2023?
Yep.
That is, I think, according to what you've seen as well?
To my knowledge, they are plugging parts of the, as you've said. And the more, to my knowledge, the water is going to be contaminated for 400 years for a very minimal mining time. And then once they're left, they're not going to refill in the hole or get rid of the contaminated water. They're just going to put a fence around it and walk away. How can you, you know, profit? Or they're going to profit, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. And then after 15 years, I think the proposed, I could be wrong, but around, it's a short period of time in terms of mining, they're just going to fence it and walk away. That's, you know, detrimental effects on our environment.
We'll certainly look into that if that's the case. One more about, you mentioned offsets. And thank you for raising the importance of native vegetation and flora for bees and many other things.
Yep.
You mentioned one particular offset area where the trees are dying.
Yep.
Who is the company?
So Regus Resources.
Right.
So one of the things that they were doing for us as beekeepers and things is offsetting trees in other locations. For starters, the trees that they were planting, by the time their mine has been finished mining, they still won't be a source that we can forage nectar on. Mature trees to be able to forage valuable nectar and things for, you're looking at 15, 20 years. And these offset trees that they've planted, there's some bordering forests in other areas. They haven't even looked after, they've planted them, ticked a box, said, you know, put up a few good snaps. Before the IPC hearing, we went out to have a look at these trees. All of the, a large majority of the plastic tree guards that they had planted these trees with are just floating all over the native vegetation around the area. And I would at an estimate say 70% of the trees were dead.
Regus, what's the area specifically? Do you know the area? What the offset's called, or we can take...
No, but I can take that on notice. There's a couple of offset areas, but you can take that on notice and I can give you that, get you that information from us.
Thank you. Are there questions from a member of the government?
Yep, thank you, through your chair. Thank you very much for coming on today.
Thank you.
Appreciate your submission. Just to help myself, perhaps other committee members understand the timeline here.
Yep.
We're talking about, are we not, a mine that's proposed to open, is that right?
Yes.
Do we have a sense of when that's going to be or what the planning, the planned operational date?
I'm not 100%. I know that like the...
Approximately.
The next couple of years.
Next couple of years. Now, you said, and I noted in your opening statement, that there was a sense that your submission about the concerns on behalf of your own business and beekeepers in general, didn't appear to be being taken seriously
Correct.
by the mining company.
Yep.
And then it appears now, I think from what you said, that there's now some apparent sensitivity or interest in your concerns.
Yep.
What was the cause of that change, in your opinion? What was the change of tune? What happened?
I think that they were surprised by how lengthy our submissions were for the IPC and how, you know, we engaged Professor Mark Taylor, the DPI, various other organisations to help us with our submissions to put forth. I think that they thought that we were just a small pest that they could overlook and not have to deal with it all and get away with it. And when we spoke at the IPC and put forth these concerns and how it is, it actually could be a valuable, a threat to our food source, that they thought... Yeah, one of the members actually came up to us at the hearing and said, we've stuffed up, basically, we should have taken you more seriously. You know, I think they were worried that our submission might have some weight on the mine.
So what I'm interested is to see, is there any progress that has been made or is being anticipated to be made by the mining company?
Yep.
With this proposed mine in one or two years' time?
Yep.
You're disappointed, obviously, that the IPC process, from your point of view, was not anywhere near what you'd hoped and there was no recommendations that you had proposed.
Yep.
Were there any other recommendations on that? Which, sorry, which could just complement my... Which has gone somewhere towards, or is in the right direction, towards addressing your concerns as beekeepers?
I think that Regus have met with my mother and my brother John once or twice since the IPC. But it just seems to be friendly, me, you know, trying to, what's the word? Trying to get us happy enough to be a share, you know, be in a distance from the mine that they can work alongside us, which can't happen. And they still haven't changed any. Like they have said, one of the recommendations that was put forth was about the night lighting. So the night lighting's going to have detrimental effects on the bees. They're not going to sleep their normal sleep cycles, they're attracted to the light.
Yeah.
There's also been studies and a couple of deaths in Australia from bees on mine sites, falling from lights, attacking workers. And there was actually a death in Western Australia a couple of years ago. So their response to that was, oh, we'll put covers around the, everything's a bit lackluster. We'll put some covers around the lights. Well, it's not really, you know, it's a good sediment and I suppose there's a few aspects that they are trying to appease us on, but it's just to appease us, it's not really going to help or make a difference.
Have, do you have, because I'm just interested to see if the company is attempting to address both, perhaps by the smaller issues right through to the larger ones.
Yep.
Have they said to you that they're going to provide you with what matters that they're prepared to look at and try and address, or you're just getting bits and pieces from them?
I think that they, they're taking our concerns more seriously and their attitude towards us. Prior to the IPC, they were quite cocky towards us and not friendly. Since the IPC, they've been more friendly towards us and probably have made an attempt to take the time to really consider our concerns. There has been a few emails back and forth, but to date, we haven't really resolved any of the...
Is there any process that you're aware of post the IPC work that was done, which you can link into, which can formalise these discussions to try and get something of matters addressed? Has that been explained to you?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can take that on notice and that could be a question for my brother and mother to come back on.
No, thank you very much. Now, just going back to your opening statement, which you've got there and I don't have, but I've just noted. You indicated that on the matter of dust...
Yep.
And I'm not arguing or tossing on this, but I just, these are your words, not mine.
Yep.
You said, if I understand correctly, that there is possible contamination from dust.
Yep.
So does that mean, so I'm just wondering, where do you derive that piece of information about possible? As opposed to certain?
So we are certain that there will be contamination, but there hasn't really been any accurate, any studies proving this. There is study, a study starting to be formalised. There's been a study recently done by Professor Mark Taylor into a nickel mine. And the residue that was found on the bees and the contamination on the inside of the bee is very evident. It's a new study that has only come out just a couple of weeks ago. I was considering tabling it today, but I wasn't confident enough in the expert terms and things in the study to put it forth today. I didn't think I could do it justice, there was a lot of jargon in there that I couldn't. But basically, it's another study proving how contamination to bees from dust, from foraging from nectar, from drinking contaminated water is really going to have a detrimental effect on the lifespan of bees and the possible contamination to honey, thus our food sources.
And on the matter of contamination of water? Can you just repeat what you said in your opening statement about the contamination of water?
Water. Exposure to water contaminated by toxic metals and cyanide can affect the bees' lifespan by drinking contaminated tailing stams. In times of high temperature, bees also bring water back to their hives to cool the hive. They do this by spraying water and fanning using their wings to cool the hive, adding the potential for contamination of honey.
Which just brings me to my final question, I guess, before I pass over back to the chair. With respect to the proposed mine, what document have you seen, if it exists, that's been produced by the company, which was presumably used as part of the IPC engagement? That outlines what they are not just intending to do, but bound to do in regards to dealing with suppression of dust or minimising dust and dealing with contaminated water or contaminated water that's potentially contaminated? Because there must be some conditions which have been placed on their actual ultimate licence to do the mining.
Yep.
Do you know what's in that?
To my knowledge, the contamination of the water, I don't think that, like, as we know, all tailings dams is contaminated water that sits there. So I'm not sure of anything that they're doing to minimise the risk of that in terms of dust.
Sorry, in what they're being required to do, there's obviously a document.
Obviously, there would be requirements for them to...
Do you know what those requirements are?
No.
No. Have you sought to find out what those requirements are?
I'm sure that members of our organisation, given my, being my brother and my mother have...
Well, can you take that on notice?
Yeah, I'll take that on notice.
And with respect to the dust, that's obviously an issue. And I know dust that occurs naturally, doesn't it, through windstorms and what have you? So dust and bees obviously do, you know, from time to time. But with the dust associated with the proposed mine, do you know of any mitigation measures which the company will be required to follow?
I'm sure that there are measures that they have to put in place to minimise dust. But look at Cadia, they were supposed to be putting in measures to minimise dust and they've now pled guilty in the last two weeks to not doing that. And like I said in my statement, I feel that once mines are approved and everybody goes back to their day-to-day lives, that mining companies really just do whatever they like.
And that's your opinion?
Yeah. And if it wasn't for members of our community giving their valuable time to put things to light, bring things to light, in terms of Cadia's contamination. I actually live in the Cadia District, I live about five kilometres from the Cadia Mine. We've had testing of our water there through the Cadia Group recently. The sludge at the bottom of the water is tens of tens of times higher levels than what it should be. It's just lucky that we use our water so frequently that these metals aren't leaching into the water. But if you were to find a stagnant water source, it would be highly contaminated. And you can't tell me that's not from the mine.
I don't know. Thank you.
We're over the time for this session. If I could just leave you with one question on notice from myself. Would you be willing to submit to us that study by Professor Taylor regarding the contamination?
Yeah, there's two studies. There's a study that he's done for us that doesn't actually give too much evidence, but it's a baseline study, so that when the mine starts up, we can then do the same testing again and be like, here you go, here's the, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I'm interested in that evidence regarding a different mine, I think you said it was a nickel mine.
Yeah, yeah, I'll submit that.
Thank you very much.
Great. And you guys will link... And you guys will email me the questions we're taking on notice.
Yes, thank you. So the secretariat will be in touch with you regarding the questions on notice. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Witnesses, Miss Lisa Paton and Tony Newman, local residents. Good morning. Could each of you please state your name and swear either the oath or affirmation?
Lisa Paton. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
My name is Tony Newman. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. I would ask you both, if it's possible, to speak into the microphone. We've got a number of committee members listening to proceedings on video conference today who I'm sure would like to hear you properly. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, I've timed this at three minutes. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land we meet on today, the Rarrijri people. I pay my respects to elders, past, present and emerging. I welcome you here today on behalf of Arnie Nyori Reynolds from Blaney, Arnie Leanna Carr, Uncle Jade Flynn and Uncle Bill Allen from Bathurst, and have been given permission to speak on the Aboriginal cultural heritage matters from the elders. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today and we hope that we are able to answer any questions you may have in regard to our submission. In the central west of New South Wales, not only are our small communities tight-knit communities, we also have strong ties with other large central west towns such as Maggi, through fama connections, business, sporting and other activities that we and our children participate in. As a member of this central west community, if I was to consider a mine proposal as a business opportunity for myself, I could not morally justify contaminating my friends and neighbours for my financial gain, such as has been the case with Kadia. With my Aboriginal heritage and the extensive amount of historical and community research we have completed, we wholeheartedly believe that this region has not only a nationally significant ancient Aboriginal history, it also has a first contact history that is unique, that should be properly documented and protected. Any other country in the world would ensure this occurred. Digging it up for gold is a lost, ongoing future tourism business development opportunity, given Aboriginal cultural heritage tourism in 2017 was worth 1.4 billion to the New South Wales economy. We as communities are asked to coordinate research, prepare and present evidence to protect our homes and country. This impacts on our ability to perform our other responsibilities as community members, family members, business owners and employees. We as a collective have submitted many reports, submissions and evidence about the likely and current impacts against these developments to the EPA, the DPE, the IPC and also to the federal government by way of a Section 10 application to protect Aboriginal cultural heritage in the area of Kings Plains from the McPhilemy's Gold Mine. It feels like this has been a never-ending scenario. We hope that this inquiry is not just another pointless process for us as a collective. We ask that you read our submissions to the EPA, DPE and IPC, who have yet to see a financial study that compares the financial benefits of the mine to the impacts long-term via impacts to human health, infrastructure, environment, future agricultural pursuits, tourism and climate change. We believe the assessment process is flawed and from the Aboriginal cultural heritage perspective, I've had this confirmed by two industry experts. We know this to be the case from other areas of concern, also backed up by experts in their field. The depths of despair are real. From a mental health perspective, looking at the people from the Kadia Community Group, the Lewi Group, the Bla Bia Headwaters Protection Group and the Aboriginal community, we have been fighting for our voices to be heard for us about 10 years. 10 years of not knowing what is going to happen to your home, your livelihood, your community, your heritage. I would suggest that many of these people are experiencing PTSD. We implore you to consider the long-term health impacts to these communities, to country and to Australia's food chain of which you are consumers. We hope that you take a legitimate action to protect these things. Personally, as a friend and neighbour of many young people, a mother, a grandmother, I feel ashamed that we older generations continue to destroy Mother Earth for financial gain and to the detriment of younger and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Newman, do you have a statement?
No, I was included for that.
That's right. We'll go to questions from members, I might start with the government this time.
Thank you. And thank you both for coming along today and thank you for your submission, excuse me, stands as submission 108 to the inquiry. On the matter of looking at the cultural heritage work that's been done, I think you said it's been done for the region. Forgive me if I've misunderstood the word in your opening statement, you're referring to the whole region. What region, just so I understand, what region are we talking about in terms of your focus on the particular Aboriginal cultural heritage issues?
Our focus has been at Kings Plains around the McPhilemy's Gold Mine.
So that's specifically where you've been looking?
Yes. I do am aware of broader, the broader context as well.
So I'm just trying to reconcile the specifics with the more general. And I read through your submission last night and I was, and correct me if I'm wrong, that I was getting a sense that the argument was being put that because of the intrinsic cultural heritage issues for the whole region, that really would prevent really any mining occurring in the region. Is that not your submission or is that your submission?
No, I, my thoughts are that because we're only young as a country and from a heritage perspective and a history perspective, 200 years, 200-odd years is very young from, you know, compared to somewhere like Rome, whatever. We have not had the opportunity to collate particularly the last few hundred years and we have not done a very good job of that as a country. There are some significant cultural sites that run through the mine, the Riegus, particularly the Riegus McPhilemy Mine. And, you know, this hasn't been collated properly. From my, in my personal opinion, the proponents do a desktop study, they don't do a thorough job and it's probably not in their best interest to do a thorough job because if they find something, then it's going to cause them problems, so.
No, thank you for that. So with respect then to looking at this particular mine itself, I think I heard you say in the opening statement was the effect that the cultural heritage process is flawed. The actual way in which it was looked at was flawed with respect to, I presume, the mine. What, what proposed one? Why do you say that?
I did submit with our submission two reports, one from Cusky and one from Williams, that outlines that they did not adhere to the legislation in doing their Aboriginal cultural heritage assessments. You know, for number one, the consultation and also the way in which they documented the artefacts even from how they were photographed. And also that their site surveying techniques were not in line with legislation in those reports, it's outlined in those reports, which I have here, but you guys have as well.
Okay, so you, I think in your opening statement, you also referred to, I think, a total of four reports. There was two you mentioned, I presume that was the two that you've just mentioned then. Did you talk about another couple of reports in your opening statement?
I have brought today a document that I've submitted to New South Wales Heritage in regards to the significance of the area as an application for state listing that I can provide to everyone.
Sure, sure. What do you say would be the standard to be met then with respect to this cultural heritage issue in regards to the mine? So you're saying that what's been done is deficient. What do you say then is the standard? What should be looked at as the standard?
Well, we've asked from the beginning, because Riegus owns most of the 6,000-odd acres, we've asked from the beginning to get back on site and that's not just, that's multiple organisations and that's something that we haven't been able to do. But what's been identified around the boundary of the mine is significant as well, but we also have, you know, what they found in their own assessment. And we've asked for a independent Aboriginal cultural and heritage assessment and that has not happened. And from abroad across the site, because they've only, depending on which document of theirs you read, they've only done 10 or 14% of 6,000 acres isn't a lot. And when you look at what is in the area, including songlines, ring trees, scar trees, artefacts, axes, lots and lots of artefacts, it's just not one thing there, there's a lot. I don't think back in the day that the local Aboriginal people would have walked around the boundary of Riegus and said, we're not going to go on here because in 2023, Riegus wants to put a mine there.
So your proposition would be, if I'm saying correctly, it's my last question, back to the chair, that there ought be no mining commenced until this was done? Is that your proposition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms Ferman? Thank you. Thanks for appearing today. So it's got alarming, your evidence, I was going to ask you about the cultural heritage impact assessments and what had been done. So you're saying, so the ones that have been done, your evidence is that they're not independent of the proponent and that you have requested an independent cultural heritage assessment that's been denied? Who did you request that of?
McPhilemy's.
Okay. And that traditional owners have been denied access to the, how many thousands of, what's the property site?
The property initially was five and a half thousand, I think it's currently at about 6,400 acres. So the survey area initially was five and a half thousand and out of that, I think there was 14, up to 14% surveyed. Part of, I think part of the issue was after the Land Council did the cultural survey and realised the significance of the site and they opposed the project at that time, they requested three times to get back on site to Riegus Resources and they didn't even respond to those requests at all.
Wow. So the Land Council is, sorry, which?
Orange Aboriginal Land Council at the time requested three times to get back on site with Riegus Resources ignoring all three requests.
So that's extraordinary. So they're not, they can't get onto the site to do their own, to continue assessing the significance of their own cultural heritage?
Considering it was only 780 acres out of the five and a half acres at the time. And also like considering some of the arte, like some of the trees, scar trees, there was eight trees in particular that were inside and just outside the pit area that were potential scar tree significant sites. And then I think Riegus Resources, obviously, that was a concern to Riegus Resources at the time because if you can't obviously take the ore out of the pit, you don't have a mine. So at that particular time, Riegus Resources commissioned another group, which was this particular group here, Heritage Consulting Australia, to resurvey those trees and other areas and they came back with a decision that none of those cultural trees were significant, the ones that were potential ones. But we actually had taken, which we have photos of of these particular trees in question, down to the traditional owners in Bathurst, the elders, and showed them the scar trees and they, they said that not every tree was a scar tree, but there was over 50% of these trees that were cultural trees. And, and that's why we feel that there needs to be a proper cultural survey done considering what's been outlined in the Cusky-Williams report, the whole, the survey was insufficient in its processes.
Could you talk a little bit for committee members about why the area is so culturally significant? In your submission, you talk about the two rivers, the headwaters, and this is, this is that area, right? This is the area that's completely blocked off now, that will be filled, I understand, with the mine's operations and the tailings dam. We've only had one or two witnesses for this inquiry so far talking about the McPhilemy's project. So if you could just really tell us what that area is and why it's culturally significant?
So at the headwaters of the river, there is a concentration of artefacts and, which I've got maps for you as well.
And it's two river, it's...
Yes, so Bilabula means river two. And historically, they knew that there was springs under the, under the headwaters of the river and so in dry times, that's where they would go. And that, and that's indicated by the amount of artefacts at the headwaters. We've also had a, the Rarrijri, the guy that's doing the Rarrijri to Starstrays, Trevor Lehman, PhD, who is doing his PhD, nearly finished, come out there the last couple of weeks and he says that indicates a gathering place. The elders say it's a gathering place. It's obviously a gathering place, you don't have that many artefacts scatters without, you know, there being something happening there. And to, you know, from the perspective of the river being the start of life, blocking the springs from a cultural perspective is quite an impact spiritually and the elders feel very strongly against that.
This is the blocking, the plugging with cement of the springs?
Yes, yes. And just the tailings dam itself poisoning the top of the river. I mean, seriously, just from a logical perspective, who in their right mind puts a tailings dam over the headwaters of a river that flows into the Lachlan and onto the Murray Darling? I mean, come on, guys.
So just on that, my last question, I think I'm out of time. Have Riegus been able to guarantee that the Bilabula River and its tributaries won't be contaminated from their operations, by their operations?
Oh, they're planning to divert water, but that's, it's all based on...
Have they said to you that, do they say that it won't be contaminated?
They said they're going to use best practice, but so did Kadia, so did BHP. I mean, what's best practice?
Thank you.
Would I be, I've got a map here of the actual site based on the preliminary report, which was done initially by, through the Land Council as well. I've got a copy for each of you, if you'd like a copy now, to have an understanding of what artefacts were there.
Thank you, you can table that through the secretariat.
Yep.
Mrs Carter? Thank you and thank you both for the time in your submission, for making yourselves available today. I think I've got a little bit confused about some of the reports and the studies in relation to cultural heritage. So as I understand it, there was an initial report done by the Land Council that identified a number of scar trees. Then there was a second report done, which came to very different conclusions. And now there's been discussion with the elders, which suggests that the original number were over identified, but there are still some scar trees?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so there seems to be a lot of different views in this space from competing experts as to what is culturally significant and what is not?
Yes. And that's why there should be an independent study done with Aboriginal archaeologists involved.
The question of independence, are you suggesting that some of the experts have been compromised? I mean, are you suggesting they've been paid for their results?
Yes, they do get paid.
Oh, sorry, I don't mean that. They, experts generally, one would expect to be paid for their work, but not, but when we start saying that they're not independent, then the question arises as whether you believe they've been paid to reach an outcome?
We don't know that, but I feel this additional survey would actually bring clarity towards, so I think if they do it.
If you have a proponent that has an end result that they're looking for, which they have an end result that they're looking for, they're, and I do believe we were spoken to by one other person, which I would have to take on notice, that had identified things and that weren't included. I, I feel that in, like in any industry, if you're not giving the organisation that's paying you what they need, you're not going to get extra work in the future. That, that's my personal opinion.
In terms of surveys, cultural surveys, is standard practice to survey 100% of the site? So should we be trying to survey 100% of the landmass of Australia? Or is standard practice to pick 5%, 20%, 3%, 18% and then extrapolate from that?
Standard practice would be like there's areas that are more likely to, you know, have artefacts such as, you know, the headwaters obviously, the round creek lines, areas where you might, you know, for example, the RTA had put a new highway through there at one stage, so they'd already identified campsites, et cetera. So you're likely around where there's already been identification of artefacts. So you're likely around where there's already been identification of artefacts to find more artefacts. So you, and, and I think you then, the intangible side of it as well, the stories. And the stories come from the traditional owners, the elders that were born from this country hold those stories. They weren't collected. And, and even when they did try submit those in particular as part of the Section 10 process, they are not taken seriously.
So simply because the whole site hasn't been surveyed doesn't invalidate the cultural surveys? Because it's standard practice to only look at?
No, but it's invalidated because it wasn't done properly, in my opinion.
So the first one was done properly, even though the elders said that they thought there was no, so none of the surveys have been done properly? So how do we get a survey that's done properly then? What are the criteria for a survey that's done?
It's under the legislation. So in the.
So we've got three surveys and none of them have been done properly? And this has been submitted to IPC, DPE, and nobody else has raised issues that they haven't been done properly?
So it's Code of Practice for Archaeological Investigation of Aboriginal Objects in New South Wales, and there's also a Code of Practice for Conservation.
No, my question really is, if these surveys have been submitted to other regulatory bodies, why has this not been picked up that, that, that your submission is that they haven't been done properly?
I can only surmise that because we had an intention as a previous state government to have a mining boom in the Central West, that any sites that were uncovered may create an issue with that.
So you're suggesting that government bodies acted in breach of the legislation?
I can't say that 100%, but potentially.
It's an interesting submission. It's a very interesting submission.
Sounds so surprising, Susan. I mean, it's not surprising. We get evidence like this all the time.
It's actually been both Cuskey and Williams have mentioned where heritage didn't, didn't have a very good response in the reports.
So is it your submission that if an appropriate survey was done and artefacts were identified, that mining could continue? Or is it your submission that there should be no mining at all?
Well, personally, I don't think it should continue because I think we've done enough to destroy this planet. But if it has to go ahead, then I think we need to be responsible. We need to look at where not only the heritage is, but where the natural resources are. And there should be onus on the proponent to, they should be doing research, they should be changing their practices to mine in a more environmentally friendly way if we need those resources. If we don't need those resources, why do we need any more gold for jewellery? And there's a large percentage of Regus in particular that is for jewellery. You know, why can't we recycle what we have? I, I, I think that the onus should be on them to improve their processes. And yes, if it's not viable, then it's not viable.
So with this particular site, you don't believe the mine should proceed at all?
Nope.
So then is there any point getting another heritage assessment if you don't believe it should proceed at all?
Only if it was going to proceed. So if it was going to proceed, we will be doing our own stuff. And like, we've been working on this for years and what we have found is outstanding. I mean, the colonial history, you know, Sir James Sterling owned King's Plain Station, which is part of the mine footprint. Sir James Sterling was the man that went and opened up WA and led the Pinjara massacre. He was at King's Plains, you know, just those relational history. And there's more, you know, you know, Sir John Wild, Sir Thomas Palmer, Marsden, they were on the boards of the native institution in Sydney where children that were being stolen were taken. They were at King's Plains. The relational history from dispossession to this site is huge, let alone the artefacts and the colonial history. Our shared history at this area, it's in the parish of Torrens. Robert Torrens was the guy that set up the title system. I mean, we need to look at this properly and capture this history before it's dug up. If you're going to dig it up, let's do it properly.
So, so your submission would be capture the cultural heritage and then the mine can proceed?
No. Capture it and see, see, see if it's significant enough to be protected. And if it's significant enough to be protected, no, it doesn't proceed. Thank you.
I've got my own question, which is about the level of lighting, which is something we heard this morning is going to impact on bees. Could you maybe explain to us what is the Aboriginal cultural significance of, of the night sky? How is that impacted by the night lighting?
So Regus's footprint sits in, in the triangle between the three brothers' story, which is Gunabula, Walu, and I can never say the other one, which is Mount Macquarie. And the sky stories they used for navigating the landscape. And this is why you would have had the conflict in this region, because the colonials were destroying the signposts. With the night sky, if it's, the lighting destroys the night sky, you can't align your sights to the sky to navigate anymore. And those stories are handed down stories that have been given to them by, you know, their elders. And, and, and that connection from a spiritual perspective will be cut because you won't be able to view it properly.
Thanks. I've got two minutes left. If you've got any more further questions?
Yes, I can jump in. Sorry. I, so back to the independent assessment that you've been asking for. So you've requested it from Regus. Have you requested it from the department as well?
Yes, we, so just to be clear here.
This would be taken, this would be done, I assume, is it a continuation of what the land council started in terms of independent assessment? Or what would be your ideal independent cultural heritage assessment of that area?
I, let me be clear here. I started, I was working for the land councillors, Natural Resource Manager, and overseeing the site offices. When that was all done, I no longer worked for the land council. And at this point, they've changed their stance, well, they're neutral on the mine. Why that has occurred, I'm not sure. I have not changed my stance.
Has that been difficult for you to not change your stance?
Yes. Personally, I've been personally attacked. I've been attacked by Regus's lawyers personally. It has been very hard. But morally, I have to do what's morally right. And I believe this is morally right. I don't get anything out of this. There's no gain out of this. I've in fact lost working hours over this. But I, I don't know.
Well, Carter, just say, just offer my full appreciation for you continuing to take such a strong stance and for refusing to, in terms of questions, just standing strong on what you're here for. So thank you for.
Can I touch, Chair, when did the land council change its position?
You can answer.
And why?
It was prior to the IPC hearing. So at the time, I was engaged while Lisa worked at the land council. When I initially found the preliminary report, I went to the land council to voice my concerns because I was part of the Bilabula Headwaters group. And the area that I covered was the cultural heritage stuff. So I went to the land council and said, look, I've got some issues around this. Do you have any concerns? Which they said, yeah, we do now based on that. And we started to work together to form a partnership to, to basically highlight the issues and highlight the significance of the site. So I had a few meetings with those guys. We were actually going to put a video together to highlight the importance of the site and the cultural importance of it. And my last meeting I had at the land council with staff there and another guy, which I can't mention names.
Approximately when was that?
Sorry?
Approximately when was that?
Oh.
2021? Or 2020?
Yeah, I can't remember. Yeah, okay. So what happens, I had that last meeting and I got talking to another person within the land council as well. And I just asked generally, as I was leaving, I said, what's coming up for you guys? What's happening? They said they've got meetings coming up with Regis Resources. And I said, oh, well, good luck with that. Hope it all goes well, kind of sarcastically. And then from that point on, communication ceased. And then over a period of time, obviously they had their meetings with them. And after that point, I had no contact with them. And then they changed their position prior to the IPC hearing. So I went from completely opposing it and wanting to work together to expose the artefacts and obviously the importance of the site to now having a neutral stance.
Have they resolved their issues with the company? Have they resolved the issues that they had with the company?
I don't understand your question.
The, the, the land council, whatever issues they did have, have they resolved it with the company?
With the mining company.
It's them.
No?
No, that's, that's privy to them. And I, I believe that there's been a bit of an about face, but the evidence, the, the actual evidence in the colonial record, the evidence on the ground.
I'm talking about the land council's position.
But yeah, their position, as I believe, is neutral. That's what their position is.
It went from opposing to now neutral. So their position has changed for some reason.
Okay, thank you.
We're out of time for this session. And thank you so much for the time you've taken both today and for all the work you've done preparing this submission as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time as well. Appreciate it.
We will now call our next witness representing Orange City Council.
I wonder if you could just announce your name and either take the oath or the affirmation?
Thank you. I'm David Woodell, the CEO of Orange City Council, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Do you have an opening statement you wish to make?
I do. Thank you. And firstly, welcome to Orange. That's the city, of course. So I am the Chief Executive Officer of Orange City Council, and I'm sure you've read our submission, and I'm here to give what I would call a balanced submission. Clearly, I speak on behalf of my council, 12 councillors, including a popularly elected mayor. So I speak in balanced terms. I'm going to try to attempt to, rather than say being for one side or another of either of the mines or the general issue. So firstly, the KDA mine is not in Orange, and neither is the proposed Regus mine. We're very lucky not to have that physical presence in our, in our LGA, close to our beautiful city. We do, however, sit on both consultative committees. We've got staff on both of their committees. So we've got our, our fingers in the pie. We understand what's going on. And of course, we're very lucky to have lots of quality jobs that arise from, certainly from the Newcrest KDA mine and perhaps from the Regus mine. And that's a big issue for our city. I will point out, secondly, that Orange does have rate payers affected by the dust issue. And there's a village called Spring Hill to our south and east, and those rate payers have been affected by the water tank issue. So we're very much on top of that communication. My councillors are very concerned about that and are keeping a keen interest in it. And my staff and I have been kept up to date on technical issues and reports. Thirdly, and I'll touch on this now, is that all of Orange's effluent goes to the Newcrest Mine, Akadia. All of, that's an old agreement whereby they take it all. This goes back to probably 20 years ago when there was load-based licensing and the council chose to give all that effluent, pump it up the hill. Water is an issue of great import to regional populations as our towns grow. Water seems to be running out as climate change hits. Town water supplies need to be prioritised over all other supplies, in our opinion. And I'm talking about agriculture, industry, all other uses. We don't see that happening across the state. And I would point out, this is a state issue that may be relevant to this inquiry. Certainly, the current regime does not prioritise town water issues. Okay, look, mining has a very positive impact on our economies. I'm speaking for Orange, okay? Very positive economic impact in many ways, but it also has a negative impact. And I've tried to outline some of that in our submission. Mining has a negative environmental impact in a few ways, and I'll keep this within my LGA. You know, roads are heavily trafficked. We do get money for that. But as you drive around, there are trucks on our roads and they do get chewed up. Biodiversity gets impacted when roads get upgraded. And we do see some of that. But I'm sure you know all of that. And clearly, it's part of the EIS process when a mine gets approved. A lot of water is used. So those mines do take a lot of water. But the biggest problem in recent years, now what I might do is firstly, direct your attention to page one of our submission and just, just some of those positive socio-economic impacts from, say, the KDA mine. 1,830 direct jobs, 3,230 jobs within the Central West region. 80% of KDA's workforce live locally. Majority of these staff live within the city of Orange. 60% of the workforce already lived here. You know, this, this is the stuff that makes Orange go gangbusters. $217 million worth of wages and benefits. So many of our local families have family members who work there. It's keeping the children of Orange here rather than going to Sydney. KDA has its community partnerships programme. 1.198 million donated back to community groups. Is that enough? I don't know. That's, that's maybe a question for you. Again, those are the positive impacts. But what are the negative impacts? And this, these are the ones that are hard to sort of, you know, give exact numbers to. It's this two-speed economy that we see here. Great if you get a mining job. They're really well-paid jobs and they're not necessarily that qualified. Families get them, you know, they, they live their lives here, they have great jobs and they can live good lives. They can buy houses, they can rent good houses. Happy days. But if you miss out, and if you're in, say, the bottom 20% of Orange, you're really missing out. You're not getting rentals. You know, you are really suffering. And we have quite a demographic that is suffering in that two-speed economy. What to do about it? Well, matter for you perhaps. We try, we're working with Landcom to look at affordable housing. And, and I think Orange is probably better off than many other regional towns. But it is, I think, a statewide problem. You know, we don't want mining camps. We don't want to play that game. We're a beautiful city. It's a problem. Combined with our tourism, Airbnb problem, you know, it is a real issue. I'm sure you'll spend a lot of time on dust. I must say that the EPA and Newcrest have kept us well informed. I'm not an expert on, on this issue, so I won't go there. As I said, council's concerned, but we've been impressed certainly by the reaction from the EPA and Newcrest. One issue I didn't raise in the submission, which I thought of over the weekend, which you might wish to consider, is a recent experience Orange went through when, to the west of us is a place called Nashdale. Orchards, grapevines, there's probably 20 cellar doors over there on the flanks of Mount Cannobulus. Fortaskew Mines came up a few years ago and announced, you know, they did some community consultation, but they announced they were going to do a drilling programme across the Nashdale area. To the great horror of the Nashdale residents, it is a beautiful area. They consulted with councils and told us what they were doing. But it just beggared belief that anyone would ever even consider a mine over that beautiful area. And finally, they left admitting defeat. And the defeat came from, you know, real mobilisation of, of residents. And there was a real feeling that it should never have happened, that, that, that a no-go zone, you know, doesn't seem to exist for mines. I mean, the EIS process is very, very thorough. I'm sure it is. I've read many of them. But I wonder to the inquiry whether no-go zones that might include high-quality agricultural areas, wilderness areas, scenic value areas, might be a way to stop some of this angst. Many thanks for letting me address the inquiry.
Thank you very much. I might start with my own question. I'm interested in the agreement for all of the grey water to be going to the mine. Under whose sort of jurisdiction or authority is that happening at the moment?
Well, it goes back 20 years. So back in those days, you paid to pollute to the creek. It was called load-based licensing. So Orange City Council at the time was So Orange City Council at the time was paying to put it into the local creek and it was considered at the time a much better deal if Kadia was willing to build the pipe and the pump stations to just let it go to them for free. And that's the way it was. That load-based licensing system is now gone and that agreement sort of goes on and on and on.
Is there an end date to the agreement that you currently have?
The agreement was for the life of the mine, so one day that will be over. Last drought, we worked with them and they gave some of it back to help with environmental flows from Sutcliffe Park Dam. So we worked with them. But yeah, in a savage drought, you know, when push came to shove.
And now that the load-based licensing is no longer in effect and I would imagine that technology for processing grey water has improved since that agreement was put in place, what other uses would there be for Orange City Council for that water?
Well, look, never say never, you could ultimately recycle that for drinking. Ultimately, you could.
Ms Fimmer?
Thank you, thanks for appearing today. So in your submission and in your evidence, you are talking about the number of jobs, the rates, the benefits that Kadia particularly provides. I think that's your evidence today, talking that up. At what point does that justify what Kadia has done and has proven to done in terms of polluting people's rainwater, in terms of impacting children's health, lead contamination? There's the Sage Health Report that shows that respiratory issues in babies and children has been potentially impacted by this. At what point does that... I mean, is that all okay because Orange City Council has got a lot of rates from it? I'm just trying to, what your evidence here is.
I think with respect, you're putting words into my mouth. I'm just trying to point out in a balanced submission. And our submission said to the terms of reference that there are some positive benefits out of mining. Of course, that never justifies that. I didn't say that, our submission doesn't say that. You know, we get benefits out of a mine and I'm trying to point that out.
You do.
In no way justifies that, I have not said that.
Okay, so what type of communication has the Orange City Council had with the affected community then as a result of Kadia Gold Mine? Do you communicate with them about what's been happening?
So Orange City Council has had very good communications with the EPA from the get-go with the Dust Matter, let's call it the Dust Matter. And we've been in their hands with the Department of Health and we've been very happy that Health Department and EPA lead us and our rate payers through this process. Okay, we've got a Spring Hill Community Committee and we've had our staff go with that community committee to the EPA-led workshops and things and night sessions and we're very satisfied with that.
So your communications via the, just to be clear, is it via the EPA as opposed to directly with the residents themselves?
My staff have been with the residents to those workshops. So we go hand in hand with our residents, that's the way we've been doing it.
Okay, and is there any kind of financial arrangement between Newcrest and Orange City Council?
No, we, so Newcrest... I'll give you some examples, probably easiest. So there's a road towards Spring Hill that we get money off Newcrest to upgrade because they use it for trucks, that's under an agreement, okay? They use it, they impact that road, they give us money, we fix the road up, that's quite a direct thing. Kadia has the fund called Community Partnerships Programme. Now, anyone in the LGA, anyone in the region can apply to that. On occasion, we don't directly apply to that, but a lot of our community groups will apply to that. But we don't, Orange City Council doesn't get paid by Newcrest at all. We get funds from the old Resources for Regions Programme, which is now at an end, I understand.
So do you...
So we would get, you know, our allocation from Resources for Regions, which is not directly from Newcrest.
Right, okay, so do you have any idea of, so what proportion of Orange's income comes from Kadia?
Well, it's too oblique to put a number on it. So if I have a worker who has a job at Kadia, I'm getting rates off that worker, okay? So we don't, so I think Blaney has a direct relationship with how much they get from the mine in terms of rates. I don't. So I have townspeople who have jobs there, who live in my shire. They pay house rates, land rates, you know, they spend money in our shops. So for us, it's more of a leap of faith that it's a benefit to our economy through jobs.
Okay, and is there some kind of agreement just for the life of the mine, which I understand is up to 2060?
This is a moot point, what the life of that original mine was, whether it was 2035. But I don't think you could say it was to 2060.
So do you have a, is there, so just to be clear, in terms of any agreement that you do have with Orange City Council, you're talking roads and other things. What are the other things that you have agreements with?
It's mainly roads and it's the effluent. So it's the effluent and roads. Roads is mainly a year-by-year proposition.
And the other, like what's the end?
The effluent has no endpoint at this stage other than the life of the mine.
Do you know when that is?
Well, in my mind, it's around 2035 at the moment. If I wanted to make a point of it, I could say it was 2035. But if they wanted to make a point of it, 2061 is a long way away.
Thank you, and thank you for coming along today as a CEO representing the council. In your submission, and it's very helpful submission, thank you very much. Can I just take you to the final page? Point number eight, impact on mining on town water supply. Particularly the second sentence. Extensive monitoring of the supplies and risk assessments have not identified any significant or adverse impacts of mining on water supply quality or quantity. I'm wondering if you could just please elucidate a bit on that please and just fill out some of the detail if you could. And if there's some blow to take on notice, that's fine as well.
Well, generally speaking, we're in a different groundwater regime as you lean this way from Kadia and Regis. So we don't, we don't... They don't take water from our catchment as such, we're over here. You know, it's not as if they're sort of diverting things that way from our surface water supplies or indeed our groundwater supplies. We work extensively with the Health Department in terms of risk assessments because we are the first city in Australia to have done stormwater harvesting. So we do a heap of stormwater harvesting, water monitoring. So, you know, we're not seeing that, that's the reference to extensive monitoring. We've got no evidence that anything weird is happening with our water supply. And this is perhaps with a little bit of a reference to the dust issue, but we've got a pretty clean supply. In terms of, say, the Newcrest take of water, you know, they take water. They've got dams up there and they take water within the New South Wales licensed system. You know, they do that legally and they've got big dams up there and they take, you know, allocations of licensing and things. That's all legal. The wider question is, why is not town water supply prioritised within that licensed system? And that's not a Newcrest problem, it's a state problem. And same with agriculture, why is town water supplies, why aren't they prioritised first?
Can I ask you, on the matter of the council, its interface with the state in terms of the regulators, whoever they might be, dealing with matters associated with mining, which is specifically the mines that are being given some focus in this inquiry, but perhaps mining more generally. Can you just provide a bit of an explanation of how that works and is it satisfactory in your mind or are there ways in which that interface can be enhanced and improved so the councils obtain better information or more thorough detail or whatever the case may be? Just from your point of view as a CEO?
So regularly for both, well, we've just started up the Regis Consultative Committee and the Newcrest one's been going on since I've been on council, so at least 15 years, 16 years. They're pretty good mechanisms. We send staff along, there's detailed minutes, they get environmental presentations, it's pretty thorough stuff.
Are they convened by who?
They're convened by, I believe they're convened within the EIS conditions of consent. They have to have such committees, you know, they're all minuted, they've all got to be, include environmental presentations, you know, the CEO of Kadia used to attend them, I think still does. You know, they're pretty solid things.
Minutes tabled?
Minutes taken, tabled, we pass them through to our councillors. I would call it reasonably transparent. Could they be enhanced? Again, I'm in Orange, you know, so the sort of direct impact of some of that stuff.
I'm only asking with the demand of your knowledge, but...
Yeah, I mean, we're invited to attend a yearly environmental inspection, which is a full-day inspection for our staff of Kadia and they go through all their groundwater, their dust. I went, I used to go on those when I was a Director of Planning, they were pretty thorough.
And can I ask, if there's an incident, any incident, that would happen on that mine site, is there a requirement for the council to be informed about that and had that brought to their attention?
I don't know if there's a requirement, but I get the phone calls instantly. If there's a worker injured or killed, I get the phone call, I'm probably the third phone call from their CEO. Same with earthquakes, this dust thing, you know, they're right on the comms.
So the engagement is reasonably satisfactory?
It's satisfactory, most certainly it's satisfactory, yeah.
You've got no particular complaints about it?
No complaints, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm interested in what you're saying in relation to the EPA process. So clearly, there's been an issue at Kadia, but in your experience, the EPA have been involved in managing, resolving that issue and talking to the community about it?
I'm not sure whether the issue's resolved. It's pretty high-tech stuff in terms of the understanding of the issue. I think there's quite a few experts who think it might be resolved, but I'm not sure the community yet is satisfied. So I think there's a fair bit of plain English work to do to satisfy the average person.
But it's a process that the EPA has been involved with?
Yes, they're working through it nicely, but I think there's a long way to go.
No, thank you.
Is my personal opinion.
Thank you. I'm very interested in essentially your invitation to us to look at the two-speed economy and the housing issue. I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about what you see as the housing challenge in Orange and what needs to be done about that?
Well, yeah, and is it in fact just the fault of mining? Covid came, you know, the trade changes came, the prices went through the roof, a very common story. And then that cohort got left behind, again, they got left behind. I think to some extent, they were already getting left behind. And good jobs in mining, I mean, we've got the DPI. We were just decentralised in the 90s and there's now 700 good state government jobs here. Similar effect on housing. Everyone wants a nice house with nice views, so, you know, the separation occurs. So that's the cause. We've got over 200 Airbnbs. They're not rental properties anymore, you know, you see that around the state. So that's the cause, very common causes. The solution, we've got a very frustrated council who would like to do something tangible about it. They're not in the mood to restrict Airbnb, so there's one solution gone. Because of our tourism is so important to us. We've rezoned the world, you know, go on, rezoned, yep, plenty of houses. But no developer will graciously make 20% of their subdivision affordable, let alone social. So there's another solution gone. So we've actually, as a council, gone to Landcom and we're building a suburb which will have 20 to 30% affordable housing. In frustration, basically. And Landcom, as you know, have got that mandate. So in a few years, we'll put probably 50 affordable housing packages to the market.
And so when will that come on the market?
We, Landcom Board has signed that off, so we've given land to the deal, 50 hectares or whatever. So that's pretty extraordinary for a council to do that. And that'll be coming in two to three years, those houses will start coming out. There's nothing else you can really do. The only leave a council have is land. There's quite a state thing to be done. And that's not talking about social housing, that's affordable.
Affordable housing, yeah. And I note your comment that while the mine has been a driver and that it's any other drivers where you've got money coming in and you get a disparity in income and therefore a disparity in affordability in terms of prices.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'd like to congratulate the council because I think it's a great initiative and it's certainly a statewide problem. And so I think it's a great initiative on the part of the Orange Council, so thank you.
I'll pass that on, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and for your submission and the secretary will be in contact with any questions on notice.
Thank you.
We'll break for 15 minutes for Morning Tea.
Witnesses please, we've got Catherine Sullivan and Craig Day. If you could please start by introducing yourself and taking either the oath or the affirmation.
My name is Catherine Sullivan and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Craig Day, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Firstly, we'd like to say that we appreciate this opportunity to outline how the terms of reference of this inquiry apply to the situation in which we find ourselves. Thank you. Our mixed farming property is west of Cara and the central west of New South Wales. This property has been in the Daye family for 100 years this year and has successfully run a livestock and cropping operation during this time. Our family has lived on the farm since 2005. Gold mining was a historic part of this area with the nearby village being highly active in the late 1800s, early 1900s. Adjacent to our land, there's a small rail line into the old mine, a stamper, and, oh, there was, sorry, a stamper and settling ponds. Once processed, the tailings were placed on our land. In 2002, 2001, under the New South Wales Government's Derelict Mine Project, almost $100,000 was spent successfully rehabilitating this area. In 2004, we agreed that then the then mine owners could use 10 acres of our land to build a tailing storage facility as part of the Brewerla King Gold Mine. We signed a memorandum of understanding, a brief document that never became a formalised contract, and I actually have a copy of that for the committee. This agreement was on the very clear understanding that this would be a short-term project. Rehabilitation would occur concurrently with mining and the land would be returned to us in approximately five years. We had already participated in the rehabilitation of the historic downstream area, so mistakenly believed a modern mine with far better regulation would pose less risk than historic operations. We also agreed, we also understood that when we signed the Weddenshire Council's owner's consent for the 2005 development application, DA 262000, all its requirements and those of the 2005 environmental impact statement would be adhered to. The EIS was initially a significant and detailed document, but because of community concerns, it had been strengthened further. We also thought that would be no adverse impact on our surrounding farmland from surface water, groundwater, or dust. An impermeable kaol and clay liner was to be used in the tailing storage facility and for rehabilitation. In 2004, the mine owners assisted us in obtaining a mining lease for our nearby existing kaol and clay deposit. This was on the understanding that this high-quality lining material would be used in the Brewerla King Gold Mine construction and rehabilitation. Instead, this material was not used but substituted with a highly acidic material, clay-like material that is dispersive and poses the risk of tunnel failure when wet. My husband has an experiment to show you later, if possible. This material is not suitable for periodic wetting and drying. We also thought that the design and construction of the tailing storage facility would comply with the 2003 Tailing Storage Facility Design Brewerla King Report, a document embedded in the 2005 EIS. This is attachment two in our submission. Further, we believe the relevant sections of the EIS, condition 61 of the DA, would be enforced, and therefore the tailing storage facility would be constructed correctly and the mine operation would meet all compliance requirements. And finally, we believed that this would be a nil-exit site. That is, no water would leave the site and enter our property. In the submissions that you have, you can look at photographs 10, 11, 16, and 17 to see the inadequacies of oversight that meant numerous outflows of contaminated water exited the mine site and flowed through the rehabilitated tailings area and downstream to the TaiGong Creek. The purpose of our submission is to outline the impact of farmland on farmland, waterways, and families when agreements between miners and landowners are not followed, and to highlight the consequences when government agencies fail to hold mining companies to their legal requirements. A quick timeline is that this began in 2008. 2010, clearing happened. 2012, we were so concerned about what was happening, we invited members of the Weddenshire Council, New South Wales EPA, and the Mines Department to our house to discuss our growing concerns. All present gave guarantees that they would ensure compliance by the miner. 2012, mining commenced, substitute material was used. Even though the authorities were alerted, nothing changed. The wall construction did not meet the 2003 standards. It was built oversteep, in the resource regulator's words, and with acid-forming rock. There was no concurrent rehabilitation. 2014, mining ceased. The operation went into care and maintenance, but at no point, as landowners with 10 acres of our land under that tailing storage facility, were we consulted about that. 2020, we were deeply concerned about the ongoing issues. On the advice of government staff, we wrote letters to ministers and received no action. 2020, December, the mining lease was sold to new miners, but there was no new arrangement made with us. In the wet years of 2020, 2022, numerous outflows from the mine site contaminated, of contaminated water occurred. In 2021, the New South Wales EPA gave permission for the miner to pump contaminated low pH water into the ore pit. That is, the deep hole blasted numerous times during the mining operation. This has potentially acid-forming or path rock walls, so low pH water should not be added. Further, the belief was that this was a contained site and no water would reach the water table. However, the pit leaked out of an unfilled attic into the old tailings and from there to the TaiGong Creek. 2021, some of our farm dams turned red, and there are photographs of that in the submission. This was the high level of iron. We stopped adjusting stock. We changed the water source for the garden after it started to kill garden plants. In 2022, the groundwater seeped through our farmland. We're unable to sow crops. In 2023, the current situation is we can't, we have no adjustment of stock and no cropping. We have dying vegetation in the TaiGong Creek and inflow lines from the mine site, the Bumbaldry Creek to the east, not even downstream of this area which is raised, is exhibiting signs of acid mine drainage and elevated iron levels. In 2004, we agreed to assist a mining operation because there was a gold reserve adjacent to our land and we wanted to end the mining activity near us. We thought the numerous checks and balances would ensure that this project of a short, five-year mining operation would exhaust the gold reserve and allow us to get on with farming. Instead, the gold resource was exhausted, but the resources regulator allowed a mining lease with no gold and no rehabilitation to go into care and maintenance, a hiatus usually allowing for the mine to restart at a later point. The resource was gone, so why care and maintenance and not immediate rehabilitation? We spent the last 16 years fighting for the conditions in the 2005 DA, the EIS, the Environmental Protection License 12845, and the Mining Act to be applied. Now, we are unable to farm. We realise that we've publicly declared our land is contaminated and therefore acknowledge that decades of rejuvenating our property have been thwarted by poor mining practice and regulation. Our families, friends, and colleagues know how hard we've worked to keep our farm, but the reality is, a property with a 10-acre area containing a tailing storage facility has never really been a saleable item. And now with much more extensive contamination, we are truly in an extreme position. Appreciate that's a bit longer, but just trying to background you on this particular mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Ms Coe?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the very clear description and the way that you have detailed the issues. I guess the first question, and this is just for me to understand if that's okay. It appears that there have been significant breaches of the agreement. Does the fact that the mining company is in care and maintenance mean that you couldn't proceed against them? Does that protect them in some way, or could you explain what that status actually means?
The mining company is a shell in that it owns no assets as such. If we were to pursue legal proceedings against that particular entity, we wouldn't get anywhere. So to go to the Land and Environment, look, in the submission, you can see how much we have lost and how much we've paid in legal fees. We do not have the money to take the miner to the Land and Environment Court.
No, thank you. And it's my understanding that with modern mines, there is a rehabilitation bond lodged. Does that extend to the tailing storage facility, or it doesn't?
Rehabilitation bond only comes really into effect when the mine is being cleaned up. At the moment, perhaps if I could explain, that while this mine is in care and maintenance, a modification to the development application has been lodged with the Weddenshire Council. And that modification is a request to go outside of the area marked on that agreement that I've just given you, to go onto our land and reclaim those old historic tailings that I spoke about first up. So they do not have our permission to this. We haven't seen any documentation to say that the downstream environment is going to be protected if they start digging up that rehabilitated area. But they have lodged that submission because their desire is to take those old tailings, reprocess them through the existing facility, take the money from that then to move on with the project to the next stage, which is to import material from other mine sites. I'm aware that that requires a new development application and consent process, but that is the idea, that they would then take derelict mine sites around New South Wales and bring their material to this particular site to process it. Unfortunately, the site is not fit for purpose for that, or even for anything, really.
So that, I guess, is the background for your recommendation in relation to not letting mines go into hiatus because that prevents access to that rehabilitation bond?
Yes, yeah, definitely. And I think if there's no resource left, and this is from the miners' own words, they exhausted the gold resource. I'm failing to understand why a mine would go into care and maintenance if, you know, on the usual understanding of that, it's maybe the price of the commodity has gone down, you're waiting for a better price and a better time, so you just let it sit for a while. But if the resource is gone...
So that proposal is looking to repurpose the tailing storage facility, which has got clear problems with its construction, and to bring further material into it. It's also requiring a reverse fit or lift, which is trying to stop the wall or cover it from the path rock that's been mistakenly implanted in it from the back. But there is no second tailing storage facility. Marking around below that wall, if it collapses, that will be at the desire of the resource regulator. It's a high-risk activity because it's inundated and wet below the wall, and it requires them to dig a core trench in very suspect soil.
If I could just go back to the hiatus, would the same result be achieved if the rehabilitation bond was said not just to be triggered at the final closure, but at any time when a clear rehabilitation need was presented?
The new document that every mine, well, every large mine should have in place, Rehabilitation Management Plan, and small mines have to have one by early next year. That Rehabilitation Management Plan means that that, it's consecutive. The rehabilitation is consecutive, concurrent. But even in the DA and the EIS and everything else, there was supposed to be concurrent rehabilitation of this particular mine site. There is a photograph showing you the wall, and it shows how steep it is. It was never supposed to be built, it was supposed to be built like this. It was supposed to be covered with dirt and vegetated as the mining process went on. So that should have happened from the very beginning. It shouldn't be at the end of a mine that you have to do massive rehabilitation. It should just be happening piece by piece. The final money, that rehabilitation bond, is there to ensure that at the end, I presume, of the life of the mine, that's sort of, because we have that little clay pit ourselves, so we know a little bit about this, that is, to ensure that it actually meets the return to the agreed land.
Yeah, the domains and the...
So the theory was good, but the enforcement was lacking?
Yes, that's correct.
See, this is purged quite high in the catchment, and because the surface water wasn't contained properly and actually only done in recent times to handle the run-on and run-off water, they basically used the tailing storage facility as a stormwater drain. They kept pumping the water over and over and over. So that's effectively backed water up onto the rock hill. Now, whether the wall's leaking, if it's path rock or whatever, you cannot have that much weight of water and not expect it to force down through that impermeable, like that permeable rock, and then end up in the lower catchment, which is what our studies basically highlighted when we did the extensive EM survey work.
And so it should have been the EPA enforcing the regulation?
EPA is responsible for water management on the site. We will admit that the miner was incredibly difficult to work with, and the advice that I was given in 2020 basically was, we can't force more from our level, at like a regional level, write to the ministers and get more action above us, basically. And that is what we did, but it didn't get us anywhere. So the EPA is responsible for the water management on site. The resources regulator is responsible for WHS and for, well, look, it gets really blurry after that, for me, anyway. But I believe that the dam construction is the Dam Safety Committee, but it is, this is not a significant dam. This is just a small, well, for them, it's big for us, small for these guys, in the scheme of things. But things are missing. There is no certificate of construction. We couldn't find it under GIPPA. We can't find it anywhere. There's no certificate of testing of the material used. That testing certificate would be pretty black and white. Our clay is white. The stuff they've used is brown. So if the tested material was white and that was what was to go in the wall, and then what has gone in the wall isn't that and doesn't meet the specs, we don't know because those test results are gone and cannot...
And so it's extremely difficult then to expect, how do you do a reverse fit on that wall with no engineering? There was a piezometer at the base of the wall, which is outlined in the report there, and that's a trigger action point. In 2015, that exhibited positive head, meaning the water's coming out of that. So this is downstream of the wall. The trigger action point in that 2003 just construction report was basically that the geotech had to be revisited. In later time, that has been described as, oh, well, it's just intersected a shallow water table. Now, if that's intersected a shallow water table, it doesn't make a lot of sense to pump toxic water into the ore pit that sits above that and then try and claim that it's a closed system.
So if I can just summarise in conclusion, you had previous experience of a successful rehabilitation process?
Yes.
Which gave you confidence to engage with more modern mining regulations?
Yes.
But either because of failure of the miner to fulfil their contractual obligations or because of lack of appropriate oversight, and perhaps this is a between-two-stools situation where the oversight didn't occur, but you're left now with significant problems?
Yes, I'd say and. Poor, poor mining, poor regulation, both of them. And I would actually say there are three entities there. It's the Weddenshire because their responsibility's under the development, the consent. It is the resources regulator, and it is the New South Wales EPA. And part of the drama, when you are, sorry, you're just going, but part of the drama as a landowner, affected landowner like this, is you go to the Weddenshire, you go to the EPA, you go to the resources regulator, and you know, well, there's an image from a video of this. And that's what's happening. You're getting this, there isn't any, towards the end, well, right now, they say they have a coordinated approach and that they are all together on the same page. And partly that is so that the miner can't play one off against the other, and supposedly it's easier for us. But a recommendation that I have made is that for a mine, there should be one lead person, one lead entity, and the others come around that, so that everything is coming to this one place.
And the allowed sale of this site has meant that the people that actually did the mining and enjoyed the gold have been let off the hook. So you've got a new miner there that really didn't enjoy the gold, but has bought the assets and liabilities. And I just think that's a bit of, that's something that I really can't understand when this mine site was demonstrated in 2018 in the targeted action project for the Mines' Department as a high-risk tailing storage facility. How do you then in 2020 allow it to be sold on?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and I'm very sorry that you have had to go through this terrible experience, but thanks so much for your evidence. It's really important for this inquiry. You talked about it's a modern mine. It was pitched to you as a modern mine, but it sounds like, not just the way in which the mine operated, but the regulatory environment, it kind of sounds like it's from 100 years ago, actually, in terms of the impact on your property. The fact that this could happen in 2023, doesn't it?
Yes.
So with, for example, you would think that it's the government's responsibility to hold a company like that to account in 2023. Is that correct?
Yeah, without a doubt.
Has the government held the company to account?
There have been...
For their actions?
There have been, like in the letter that I submitted from the resources regulator, they said that they'd fine them $10,000 for non-compliance. There was a fine of $15,000 by the EPA for non-compliance, but that was because they hadn't completed all of the water tests that they needed to do. It had nothing to do with the quality of the water that was pouring out of that large pipe in such high volumes down through our property. So that, yes.
The pollution licence wasn't, followed the monitoring of the downstream exits, we've never been measured. We were the only ones to measure those. All they were measuring is what was being pumped up the hill back into either the ore pit or the tailing storage facility in the high rainfall events. But whilst that's happening, it's still discharging down into the creek. So that was never really accounted for how much is discharged off that site. Now, in a previous job, I was working, attached to the Department of Land and Water Conservation, and I was actually sharing an office with the guy that did the peak discharges off that site when it was back in planning. And the runoff coefficients of that site are not indicated in most recent reports. They indicate that rainfall and evaporation are nearly the same. If that's the case, you wouldn't grow a crop in the central west. You have to multiply the rainfall runoff off that site. It yields a hell of a lot of water.
So heading, getting back, thinking about the government's responsibility, if you like, to ensure that the companies that do say they're going to protect land and water and air do so. What was your communication, if you like, with the government? So let's go to the EPA. So what was your communication like to begin with to the EPA? How responsive were they? How many times did you have to speak to them before you got action?
So really, if we...
Or contact them, sorry.
2012.
Cover the testing.
In 2012, a person from the Bathurst office in the EPA helped me pull that meeting together at our house.
And that was after how many times before? Did you have to, did you have to...
No, no, this was 2012. This is 2012. So this is really early. So this is before the mine even truly begins. So in 2012, everyone was a bit concerned, I think. So we had the meeting. There's that really fairly nasty PowerPoint that is part of an attachment. I did an edit it for Craig. It's definitely his work, that one. In that PowerPoint, you can see that he outlined all of the issues that we wanted addressed at that time. So 2012, that's 11 years ago. And I will say, the EPA were very helpful in helping us pull the meeting together and in trying to get something to happen. Unfortunately, it was, we brought the clay, or the whatever material you want to call it, the clay stuff that they lined the tailings wall with. We tried to alert the resources regulator to that and the Weddenshire, but that's not the domain of the EPA. So what it is, is that there's different parts for everybody.
In 2012, you tried to alert the EPA and the Weddenshire Council to the fact that what they were going to line the tailings now with, is that right?
We had the meeting in March, and then a few months later, that's when they changed and we alerted the Weddenshire and the resources regulator to the fact that they were using a different material, and they basically did nothing. In the EIS, it actually says that clay from Daye's mine will be transported in. There's a transport route, there's all sorts of things. It is more than implied that that's the material that will be used.
Plus, the, you know, the original miner, we're going back two miners now, the original miner helped us get our mining leases up, helped us with our surveying and all that because they, I think genuinely, the original people thought they needed this material to get it to work. Now, when I raised this with the resources regulator representative, he said, oh, I said, they're using the wrong material. Now, when I raised this with the Resources Regulator representative, he said, oh, I said, they're using the wrong material. It's a, it's a divergence from the D A. I was told, oh, you know, they're doing it on a shoestring. Well, that's alarm bells to me. If that's, and I can put that conversation in time that happened, but you're doing it on a shoestring? I think that's when you'd say, we've got a problem here.
So how much money overall did you receive? I think you said $10,000.
$10,000.
That's what you've received.
Yeah, and we were denied $150,000 worth of clay sale. Plus, the, we would have paid a royalty to the government, which would have went to the Mines Department for our clay.
How much overall has the impact of contamination by the mine costed you, do you think, cost you?
Oh, well, it's quite a quantum out there because we also supplied the irrigation bores to that. We were then going to convert 200 or 120 hectares to irrigation. But with the pumping into the ore pit and the contamination of the two sediment dams that they call, which were actually built for that purpose, yeah, we've lost all of that.
So with contaminated water, have you lost livestock or seen any impact on wildlife?
No, we stopped, we did a risk assessment and said, you can't pump into that ore pit and not expect this to have a problem.
Once the dams went red and once I did that experiment in the garden, putting the sprinkler on half the walnut tree, I couldn't work out, there was another tree out the front and I thought, it must need more water. So we kept pouring water on this poor little tree out the front and it was getting sicker and sicker. And then we hit the, did the experiment with the tree. I figured if that, if that did that to an established walnut tree, what would it do to an animal that was trying to drink it?
What did it do to the walnut tree?
Oh, sorry, it, the half that was unsprayed, we made green and lovely. The half that was sprayed went brown, crinkled and died.
Just salt affected.
And, and the pipes that came out of the tank were, you know, one was just rust covered. It was just because of the drip from the tap.
So based upon your experience with this and how the, the Resources Regulator and the EPA responded as well, what would, what do you think when you hear Regus Resources and Bowdens Mine reassure communities that everything will be okay in terms of their land and water? Are you worried about what other communities will experience?
Oh, I think it's, you know, I think like it's heightening concern, community's more concerned than ever. I mean, these guys in, in our situation here want to continue on to do a project, but they've lost all community confidence in this project. And I tried to Google up on the, on the weekend, how many derelict mine sites are in New South Wales? And I thought, you, you end up with different numbers and let's say it's 300, let's say it's 500, it could be more. What have they all got in common? They're all owned by different people or were owned by different people. The commonality is the regulatory process that's running them. I mean, that's why we're like, it's, this is, this is just can't continue. We need mining if we're going to survive, like in a society for everything we want. But, you know, we're competing with people in the world like the UK that only produce a third of their food. We cannot keep destroying environment because we will have to feed somebody.
I have more questions, but I'm probably, time's probably.
We've got 15 minutes to go, I'll go to the government for a few questions and if there's time, we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Chair, through your chair. Thank you both very much for coming today. Very difficult for you. This has been quite a long battle and it's still not resolved, obviously, satisfactorily in your detailed submission. Can I first of all go back to the, the M O U, which you've circulated? So thank you for that. This is probably just a fine point, but I, I note that the execution of it, there's no date.
No.
What, what happened there, can I ask you?
It just tells you how shoddy it actually was. It was signed on the front of a utponet, from memory, by Craig and his brother. And what had happened is there'd been some faxing, we're back in the day, of, of the document. And it was agreed that in five years, this would be reviewed, everything else like that. The miners turned up and these are the first miners, they were better than the rest of them. And that extracted that little clause out of it. But Gareth and Craig thought that they were signing that in five years, this will be revisited. I have no clue why the date isn't actually on there, it's just 2004. Initially, when we gave this to people, they said, this isn't worth anything. This is, it shows you how shoddy the document is that it's not even got a date on it. That's what I would say.
I mean, there's obviously more sophisticated legal minds around the table than me here, but you've obviously tested that, I mean, and had legal advice about the significance and otherwise of that?
Yeah, we have. And it's, and it comes down to, it can be argued that it is valid and it can be argued that it's not valid. So that sounds like legal advice, doesn't it? So, so you've got two ways of seeing this document. But look, if it is valid.
It is clause four.
Then we should be able to, to say you've contaminated our land and you owe us compensation. But despite the evidence we have provided, they simply say, you've got natural springs on your place. There's, they don't identify a problem. So we just, like I said before, we don't have the money to go to the Land and Environment Court.
Understand, so thank you for clarifying that. The progress of the mine from what it was to care and maintenance, as you described in your opening statement, did that, was there any consultation with you about that or was that something unilaterally you found out about? In other words?
We were informed of it, I think, well after the event, yeah. Possibly, look, you're testing me, but I'd say.
No, 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 I'm not pressuring you for a specific time, but.
We were consulted in the process of it. This is our land, 10 acres of our land sitting under that tailing storage facility. And yet we were not consulted about this and everything. So the Mining Operation Plan lapsed in October 2018. So at that, that was like a trigger moment for us. And we went back to the Resources Regulator and to the EPA and said, you know, this can't keep going on like this. We want our land back. If things go up and down in our lives, and there was a moment when we were thinking we would have to sell the property. You can't sell a property that's got a tailing storage facility, well, possibly could.
Expect to get a reasonable price for it.
Yeah.
No, no, indeed, no, I, I understand what you're saying. Which brings me to the, the comment in answering to an earlier question. And I'm not being political here, but just my colleagues might think otherwise. But in terms of wrote to the minister at the time, I think you said 2019, what, what came back from the minister's office, can I ask?
So in terms of the Resources Regulator or the Minister for Industry, so it was John Barilaro's office, that the response from that person, Anthony Keon.
Sorry, from who?
Anthony.
Keyon.
Keyon.
I don't know who that is.
Yeah, no, it doesn't matter, but the response, it's actually in your, in your letter there. It sounded really positive, it sounded really good. But then two months later, even with all the directives for action and everything else that were there against the miner, they.
Sorry, sorry, what directives are you talking about for action? In the letter or in another document?
No.
Sorry, you can take it on notice, I'm not meaning to push you too hard on this.
Yeah, no, that, that's all right. In your submission, you will see a list of directives that have been issued. There are extra ones as well, from my understanding, I will get that back to you. So basically, we got a bit excited by that response because it sounded like something was going to happen. Unfortunately, two months later, there was assistance or facilitation from the Resources Regulated, Regulation Department to help the new miners into the mining entity, even though things were not great with the mine site.
I mean, it's just irrespective of which government's in, of whatever complexion, a, a, a letter from a minister, if it is a letter from the minister, should have some standing and some weight.
It's the, it's the letter from Matt Keane that's probably the biggest concern that says there's no environmental, no pollution on your property, when the EPA testing in 2015 at the source of the pollution showed 50,000 times the allowable level of cadmium exiting. And then saying there's been no exits, there's been 20 exits over the life of the mine in pre-production of just, just sediment water and then during the actual mining process and in care and maintenance. This has been a disaster.
Just to clarify that, it was the 2021 testing from the EPA, earlier testing in 2015 showed problems. But in 2021, the first round of testing that was done, tested the sump, just that little dam at the base of the tailing storage facility. And what they said there was that things were really, it was highly contaminated. It's just at the base of the tailings wall. Unfortunately, it's then connected to another dam and then to a pipe. And the pipe comes through the fence and then, and when it rains too much and they only have one pump, they use the pump to pump the water initially back into the tailing storage facility. But when that became too full and really at risk of catastrophic failure, they then got the permission to pump into the ore pit. So, but, but they can't keep up with the water amount. So what happens is out of a trickle pipe about that size, water just cascades at over 80,000 litres a day, just coming down through our property and out. Now, that P H, that sump dam at that time was 2.2. So when Craig was measuring what was coming out of there, it was 4.4, a P H of 4.4.
That's with all the rain.
Just to clarify, we actually do water testing and water assessments as part of our training that we run as chemical experts, I'll call him, so spray application experts. So we look at water quality, that's what we do. So, and we looked, but there was never, this is part of the problem with the Environmental Protection License, there was never a requirement for someone to look at that pipe and say, what heavy metals are coming out of there? It was simply just the P H and the, and the oils.
Oil grease and cyanide.
So you've got in your possession correspondence from two ministers, is that correct?
You have two.
You have two.
Some, absolutely, yeah. Is there anyone else you've received formal correspondence with at that level or just the two ministers?
No, just the ministers.
Highest correspondence you've received?
Maitland Resources Regulator, we've got numerous emails, letters, whatever else, EPA people at regional levels, numerous letters, emails.
No doubt, yes.
But from that highest level, just those, those ministers?
And my final question, just quickly, with respect to the, and you made this point, and I think I might be paraphrasing you slightly to an earlier question. There seems to be some emergence, it might be early emergence of better coordination or better coordinated approach between the Resources Regulator, the EPA and the Weddenshire Council. Can you just elucidate on that and explain what you mean? Is it starting to go, I mean, it's been a long time, of course, but what's happening now, which, which is?
Well, the truth is, I probably don't really know. I've sent an email, I sent an email to the EPA in July, trying to alarm them to the fact that the creek on the eastern side has turned red and it's flowing under the road and into our neighbour's land. I've not had a response to those photographs or to that email. So where are we?
We're now in October.
October, so possibly I'm not best placed to know what is actually going on. We do understand that there are meetings behind closed doors. We've had an informal chat, I suppose. We've, I've tried. I've tried, look, it's.
You've tried, tried and tried.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? So the, you're talking about the quality of the water that's running through your property and you said that the P H was measured at 2.2?
That's in the sump dam and then as it flowed into our land, it was measured at 4.4. And obviously, norm is around 6.5.
Yeah, so 2.2 is consistent with stomach acid.
That's correct.
And the position of the former New South Wales Government was that you did not have contamination on your property?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and to deny that the spills hadn't happened, you could go back through the EPA hotline and just see every time we complained, we've got photos of every, every event. And only the events when we're there, we're on the road 32, maybe 36 weeks of the year. So in those wet years, we only saw the spills that we saw.
Yeah.
You know?
It's extraordinary, thank you, Mrs Connor.
Can I just ask one question about the agreement? The agreement requires for the joint venture to lodge a security deposit and that that should be available to be used for rehabilitation at the discretion of the Department of Mineral Resources. Was that a security deposit lodged?
To best of our knowledge, so initially, I think that bond was somewhere around the $300,000. Now it stands at about 1.7, I think, the new bond that is there.
And just have to, because under the terms of this agreement, that should be available to do rehabilitation works on your land in relation to the.
Oh.
No, I don't think that's how that would be viewed, but, yeah, no, that's what it says, yeah.
Thanks.
This bond can be used at any time at the discretion of the New South Wales Department of Mineral Resources for rehabilitation purposes. And it's only in relation to the tailing storage facility?
Well, that, that's all, they had the agreement over, as you can see in the attachment, it's only in the fenced area that, where that agreement relates to.
Thank you, but.
Well, I, I, at the very least, it's.
It's about proving to the miner that we have suffered contamination. And it's just, it's been a difficult point to prove.
The pollution, sorry.
How has it been difficult, how has it been difficult to prove that contamination? You've got photos, you've got the results coming through your ears in terms of. Who has it been difficult to prove to? The EPA?
No, 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 the mine, the miner.
Whose responsibility is it to prove that to the mine, though?
It's ours, I think. So, and that means it has to be argued in a court. That's my understanding.
I, I think actually what you'd find is that this should be enforced through the Resources Regulator because it's not up to the mine, the mines paid the money and it's the third party who enforces the rehabilitation. And the Resources Regulator would be the equivalent of the Department of Mineral Resources. So I would start there.
So now. You've started there, though, just to be clear, I think with respect, witnesses have tried and tried and tried and tried.
I am not suggesting that there has been any lack of effort. In fact, I have deep sympathy for everything that you have done and the frustration, or to put it lightly, that you must be feeling. I'm just suggesting that that's.
An avenue.
An avenue. And if perhaps this agreement is brought to the attention of the Resources Regulator, I'll get another email for you.
No, that's all right. The last email we had from them after correspondence was that their understanding was there was a valid agreement in place between us and the miner for exploration as well as for mining. I don't see that as a valid agreement. That was, that was for a moment in time for one job and it's finished.
This is not an exploration agreement.
No, and it's certainly not an exploration.
This is not an exploration agreement.
And, and just, we will, I will pursue that and I will attach that.
Underpinning that was the knowledge that they were going to use clay sourced from us. So there was a stream of income there denied, not only, as I said, not only to us, but also to the Resources Regulator from the royalty we would have had to pay. It just doesn't make sense to then use inferior material. When I, I raised the inferior material in the same conversation, I was told, I'm not a clay expert. You know, but I said, it doesn't matter, you don't have to be an expert to the Resource Regulator. You've just got to follow what's in the E I S and the D A. That's, you know, and the E I S being the underpinning document to the D A, like this was a divergence from what was supposed to happen. Just ridiculous.
I mean, surely you should think that the government should step in here. It shouldn't be up to you as private landholders, you're paid $10,000 for goodness sake. It shouldn't be up to you to run this fight against this company. Do you think the government has done enough? And what's your last message, we're almost out of time, but to the government, to the EPA, to the Resources Regulator?
So I think our concerns now are for our neighbours as well as ourselves because this contamination has hit two creeks. So we're really worried about what's happening. We're really worried about the groundwater that's now emanating up with such high levels of heavy metals all through our property, but I don't think it'll just stop there. So what we would really like to see is a solution to this problem. And the government's directive that they dig, that they, they modify the existing tailing storage facility, we'll just keep water in it to make it a lake. Like, it's the opposite problem to Cadian, there's no dust here, it's just water everywhere. That, we are suggesting, or we would like to work with the secretaries from those three ministers' departments to say, there is another solution to this problem. And that is to build a tailing, another tailing storage facility further downstream so that it is geotech lined, it's properly made. You can then deconstruct the top wall. You could potentially remediate those old tailings because they're not in the stable position, condition they were once in. Or we're not certain of that, but that we believe that to be the case. So you could actually rework this site, so you stop further pollution going downstream. You do everything properly in, in the spirit of like the modern sort of, not modern, that's the wrong word, but the rehabilitation management planning that now exists. And you could actually deconstruct that tailings wall and reprocess what you need to reprocess and then rehabilitate the whole site. There is an opportunity to do that and that would protect the downstream environment. You'd need a reverse osmosis unit to pump out that water from the ore pit because it's just going down and to treat it and get everything out, plus the water from the tailing storage facility. It's a fairly massive problem.
But the situation we're staring at is that I think the, the current proposal is to use the same material that was used initially. And I've got a little preparation here, this is water, that'll explode. It's sodium, so you've got a lot of positive charge on the sodium, you've got two positive charges on the water. It's just magnets. That has not, has any ability to be used as a capping mechanism. It's going to cap crust and erode. They're anticipating they want to put this up a three to one batter. It's impossible to get it there. The money that the Resources Regulator is expecting this miner to do is going to trap that water high in the catchment. A rebuild and a refit, at least I'm. A rebuild and a refit and at least I'm doing it properly and for once, let's listen to the stakeholders that are locally impacted. We might come up with a solution because what they've done up to now isn't working.
That would be a good summation.
And it's played a part as I, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much for your evidence today and sharing everything that you've been through, not just for your own benefit, but for your neighbours and hopefully for communities across New South Wales. We're very grateful.
Thank you very much. We really do appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're going to break for half an hour.
I'd like to welcome our next witnesses, if you could please state your name and position and take either the oath or the affirmation.
I'll go first then.
Hello.
My name is Ian Pearce, I'm a Director of Pearce Family Trust, trading as PFT Agriculture. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Bruce Reynolds, resident affirmation, I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, would you like to make a short opening statement?
You go first.
Yes, thank you. My name's Ian Pearce, I'm a Director of Pearce Family Trust, trading as PFT Agriculture, and we're a whole agricultural business located north of Orange, producing apples and cherries. Our family has been continuously producing fruit in this locality for over 100 years. An essential component of our production base is the ability to access adequate water through irrigation, a significant portion of this is sourced from licences on Summerhill Creek. In relation to the terms of reference for this inquiry, PFT Agriculture submits there's been a substantial, significant impact on the flows in the Summerhill Creek system through the transfer of treated effluent water to the Cadia Gold Mine, which previously discharged back into the Summerhill Creek system. These transfers occur predominantly in dry years, there has been the direct effect of the removal of approximately eight to 10 megalitres per day of flow and up to 13 megalitres per day. It should be noted that this is an intercatchment transfer between the Macquarie and Lachlan Valleys. This direct extraction has led to the indirect effect of the lack of treated water being available to the Orange City Council for recycling, which has led it to further pursue extractions from Summerhill Creek through current and proposed stormwater harvesting schemes. The cumulative impact of these extractions on the Summerhill Creek system are provided in Annexia Two of my submission. The water security situation for our business has changed from effectively 100% security prior to 1998 to now no periods at times of no flow, as evidenced in the 2019 to 20 summer. Under the terms of our licence, we can only extract water when there are visible flows in our system. There has been a direct impact on production and the risk profile of our business has been substantially increased, I refer you to Annexia One of our submission. Were treated effluent transfers available to be recycled, there will be substantial opportunities to improve the water security of Orange and downstream stakeholders and create a more sustainable water regime for the whole catchment. It would also remove the need for further proposed extractions from the Summerhill Creek system. I'd welcome any questions the committee may have and thank you for this opportunity.
And I'm Bruce Reynolds, as I mentioned before, Cadia area resident, so thank you for the opportunity to speak today and I'd like to acknowledge the Rarjuri people on whose land we meet today. Just under full disclosure, I'm also a councillor, a county councillor, I sit as an alternate on the Regis Resources, CCC, and an executive councillor with New South Wales Farmers. I'll start by identifying my family as ground zero. We were the first to be told not to drink our water, as it contained high levels of heavy metals, so we were the first individuals that were told not to touch the water. Could you imagine getting that message late on a Friday afternoon, not to drink your water, and it was about six o'clock at night? We didn't know what to do, we immediately got water from Orange, so we bought containers so that we had drinking, safe drinking water, and undertook other activities such as washing our clothes in Orange at a family member's house. We also got our blood tested. My daughter has high levels of selenium in her blood, I was copper, and later I found that I've also got high levels of both molybdenum and nickel in my blood. My daughter with hair testing and my wife, I think it's cadmium that's high levels in their hair, cobalt sorry, that's high levels in their hair. We retested that water after the first test results came back, and the second test results were even worse than the first test results with high levels, unsafe levels of a number of minerals. We approached Cadia straight away and asked for a meeting, they came to our house, they came to our kitchen table and made a number of promises. Very few of those promises have been delivered, quite sadly. We spent months coming up with solutions to clean our water, and after overseas analysis, yes, we had to go overseas to actually find out how to remove all of these heavy metals. We have now installed three levels of filtration on our house. The final is a reverse osmosis for drinking water, which is equivalent to Sydney's desalination plant, but very, very small version of that, that's cost us around $8,000 of our own money to try and protect my family. My family is now relatively healthy. What I can't get over is comments that Cadia made to this inquiry at its previous meeting, where they said that they were sorry but didn't really believe they'd done anything wrong. Then they plead guilty in the Land and Environment Court last Friday. Isn't pleading guilty an admission of wrongdoing? I seriously ask that question and ask for your committee to take that on board. I also constantly hear that they can't locate a link between the roofs or their dust and the water tanks. Here is proof in this container, this is gutter mud, and I took five buckets of gutter mud last September out of my gutters, and luckily I kept two of the buckets. I offered them to Cadia, I also offered them to the EPA to test, to see what minerals were in my gutter. Finally, we managed to get some testing done, and it's come back that, you know, this is a copper mine that we're talking about as well as gold, so 100,000 tonnes of copper a year. The copper content in this gutter mud is 12 times the surrounding soil samples, so if it was dust from paddocks, then it should be a twelfth of what it is. The level of zinc is around 50 times surrounding paddock soil level. Nickel is two and a half times the soil level, and corium at least four times the surrounding soil level. Cadmium also registers, but it's not registering in the soil samples. To me, that sounds like a very dangerous cocktail, going directly into our tanks, and yet no one to this stage had been interested. So if I put a little bit of this dirt in this glass, and it dissolves, and it will take a while because it's very dried out, but would you drink that water? We were drinking that water, it was coming straight off our gutter into our tanks and then into our water supply. So now, quickly looking at the, with regard to the EPA, as we approached the EPA, I offered these samples, and there just was a total disinterest in what was in the water. Eventually we've got it tested, and as I said, I've given you those results, but in looking at what the mining companies give, around about 4.7 billion I think it is in royalties to this state government on an annual basis, and this is from coal mining through to heavy metals, so very little of that, if anything, is now coming back to the regions. Looking forward, and Cadia Mine is about to lodge a modification number 15, we're already through 14 modifications, 14, modification 14 was actually that this air vent, the 100k an hour air shaft that was blasting dust up into the atmosphere and we believe contaminating our property. We're about nine and a half kilometres from this air shaft and air vent, and we could see the dust, I'd reported it to the EPA but there was lack of interest. Modification 15 appears to have been delayed, so one thing I ask the committee is it clamps down on modifications on any projects in New South Wales and meets the requirements of a full EIS and not some substandard response that delivers outcomes like we have encountered. Not at this stage and not that I'm under, I am aware that the Health Department has created a special group to do some analysis, but no, I don't believe any of the test results, blood test results have been provided to any organisation or we have been asked to provide any information.
Thanks. Ms. Ferman?
Thank you. Thanks for coming today, both of you. Mr. Reynolds, how far away did you say you lived from the vent, I think you said, but the mine, what's your distance?
We're approximately nine and a half kilometres as the crow flies, so directly a little bit longer by road.
Nine and a half kilometres. I mean, I feel like we have heard that the dust doesn't travel as far as that on good days. Is that, nine and a half kilometres seems like a decent, decent distance.
Well, it is a decent distance and when you look, as in, I have a neighbour that's about 500 metres from me, who built a brand new house, so it's about two years old and in their tank, they've had high levels of lead, so there's no lead in the roof. So, as in, what's putting it there? But to try and answer your question, we've seen the dust haze. I've reported the dust haze to Kadia and I get told it's water vapour. There's no minerals in it, there's no, there's nothing wrong with the air, yet you can visually see this haze and when you actually look from various viewpoints, you can actually, while this vent wasn't being filtered, so the dust was just travelling for many, many kilometres. You could see in the atmosphere this dust haze that was emanating. So, if the wind was coming from the south, from the vent north, you could see the haze. From the vent south, if it was a southerly wind, there was no haze.
And so, we've heard a lot about the fingerprinting of the lead, the various particles to tanks. Has anybody in your area had their, or you, or neighbours, had the lead in tanks fingerprinted? And has it been, has it been connected to the mine?
So, personally, no. I believe there have been some neighbours, as in, the example I gave just a moment ago about that neighbour that did have high levels of lead, their material was fingerprinted. But this gutter mud, as in, is probably a good example, it's quite solid. As far as I'm aware, it's never been actually tested, it's never been fingerprinted to actually determine. All they've looked at is the sludge on the bottom of tanks.
So, that's, that's never been fingerprinted?
As far as I'm aware, this hasn't been, Kadia has never come back to me and said yes or no or...
Have they cleaned your tanks?
No, as in, which was a promise made at the kitchen table back when we, we approached Kadia. And one important thing to highlight, I'm not against mining, as in, as long as it's done properly, as long as there's no pollution that impacts on the community. So, we approached Kadia and said, look, we've got a problem. So, and they made certain assurances at the kitchen table.
Including coming and cleaning around the tank?
So, yes, we would come and do it. We wouldn't give them our test results, we verbally told them what our test results are, but we wouldn't give them a physical rundown or the second rundown, the second lot of test results. They came and did testing and we're confused on how the, the tank water was better quality than what was coming out of the pump at the bottom when they did their testing. Yet we'd had two lots of test results done by two different organisations, one the University of Western Sydney, one by ALS, I think that's the name of the company, and both of them showed high levels, I'm happy to provide to the committee confidentially, those test results, but I don't want to put on the public record. And then the Kadia test results came back as though it was the most pristine water that you'd ever had. So, I cannot gather how it was that you had two different lots of test results, other than that it had been a very dry period for a number of weeks, so whether the heavy metals had settled right on the bottom of the tank or whether the two test samples they took were both from the top of, top of the tank and there was an accident by the tester and one was on the bottom of the tank that they tested on. I don't know the answer. I have actually had in recent times another test sample taken to actually see again. I don't have those test results back yet, I'm hoping to have them back in the next week or so. So, again, I'm happy to make them available to the committee once I do have those results.
One of your recommendations or something that you'd like to see this inquiry achieve or recommend is that residents are provided with safe drinking water. It's not too much to ask, surely?
Well, I'd hope, as in, we were provided with bottled water until we put the reverse osmosis system in and as I said, it was a very expensive exercise to go and put all this...
Which you had to pay yourself?
We've had to pay ourselves, we haven't got a cent from the company. So, the bottled water was provided in the short term until we implemented a system because we just can't go on forever with an unsafe. And the expert advice we got from overseas was that one filtration system, so big filters next to the bore, next to the, the house pumps, so it's not, nothing to do with bore water, it's pure tank water from the house, couldn't take out all the heavy metals. The only way that you could take them all out that we had in our test results was through this reverse osmosis system. And then you've got to pay for the power to run it, et cetera. So, there's an ongoing cost as well as the original capital outlay.
Thank you. Can I ask both of, I know my time will run out, very quickly, can I ask both of you, from your experience, is it possible for communities and household, landholders, families to live close to a gold mine without it impacting on their health or the health of the land and water that they survive on and live on?
Let him go first.
It's a little bit beyond my area of expertise, I suppose, but I would see that there shouldn't be any reason why we couldn't coexist, but it's the approach that's taken particularly by the larger corporates, I think. We have found them being quite dismissive quite often to any approaches we've made. So, it's, I think there just needs to be a better process of enforcing requirements and, and having a view to the future and working together. And, you know, no one, none of us want to, I don't want to see mining stopped, but I think the broader picture is we all need to coexist and we need to coexist healthily and without impacts on agriculture, on our health, on water.
It is impacting on agriculture at the moment, is what your evidence is saying.
In our case, yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Impact on agriculture, again, I have concerns if the dust is there, particularly in horticulture, but also with livestock grazing, as in, our pasture's being contaminated. Is horticultural produce being contaminated? I grow blueberries, raspberries and cherries. Are my crops being contaminated because leaf foliar absorption is quite high and you can use foliar applications of fertilisers to boost, you know, plant production? So, that's one area that is unknown and we don't know the answer, whether the food that we're producing around this area, we hope it's safe, but is it safe? We don't have an answer to that question. On the other side for coexistence, I think, yes, you can, as long as you have safeguards and undertake appropriate production systems in the mine that actually don't allow discharge of contaminants into the atmosphere, and that's both off tailings dams and also off the vent shaft. I believe there's the vent shaft that coming purely off the underground crusher, so pure unprocessed rock, as in, or particles coming up and potentially coming over our place. So, you've got to have the systems in place to make sure that the community around it is fully protected, otherwise, as in, no, you can't coexist.
One last question then.
We're going to go?
I suppose that comes down to also the regulatory environment in terms of having a strong EPA. Is, does the EPA have enough powers to make sure that Kadia is not polluting land and water, in your opinions?
I'd like to see an increase and I think I've put it in one of the 14 recommendations, an increase in the power to actually take action. The $15,000 pin is nothing, as in, it's a slap on the wrist as far as I see. So, at least now, as in, the proceedings have gone to the Land and Environment Court. We'll wait to see, I think it's next March, before a finding comes down on that, from the Land and Environment Court on what the punishment is. But, yeah, I just don't think the EPA has enough teeth or power at this point in time.
Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, through your chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for both coming along and thank you for your submissions. Mr. Reynolds, with respect to that around the kitchen table meeting that took place that you described with Kadia, approximately when was that? Just approximately?
It would have been, I think, either late February or early March. I can find the date.
No, no, no. Are you talking about 2023?
Yes, so this year, yes.
And with respect to what they said that they would be prepared to do or consider, did you have a list or did you write down or after the meeting, make a note of what they said?
So, my wife is in the audience, did actually take notes and very comprehensive notes. So, yes, we do, we do have that written record.
Okay. I'm wondering on notice if you'd be, well, subjects of speaking to your wife, would you be prepared to provide that? Because I'm just keen to know, did they action, any of what they said they would do or, or none or 50%? I'm just interested to know what they have...
So, I should...
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you and your wife on, on the spot.
No, as in, I'm checking with my wife whether she'd make it available, isn't happy to make it available.
You can consider that in your own time.
But to answer your question, probably about 20%, so the water on the day, I think, was the, and they also did provide some dry cleaning or some cleaning of clothes because we didn't know if we were using contaminated water and therefore, you know, when you're sweating or you're wearing the clothes, whether you're absorbing heavy metals. So, we went to, you know, full protection, particularly my daughter who was having eczema issues and after we went to clean water, the eczema issues cleared up over a period of time and we haven't had the severe eczema issues since. So, again, we don't know the answer, but the one disappointing thing I found was within a few days, probably a week or so afterwards, Kadia rang me up and said, now, as a local government councillor, are you aware that if you accept a certain amount of money of cleaning of your clothes, that you have to declare this and you have to make a declaration as a councillor, which happens to be $500 and the amount of money that we've, and we didn't receive it, they just paid the bill to the, to a dry, to a cleaning company in Orange. It was under $500 anyway, but I still, as a councillor, have made declarations if we're dealing with a council issue with regard to that. So, those were the two things that they committed to, that they actually did do on the day, but the cleaning of tanks, no. As in, and they've backed away from cleaning tanks since...
So, when you say backed away, they just haven't come back to you in regards to responding to the...
They've pretty well said to all residents, including ourselves, outside of, I think it's about 20 tanks, but I don't know the exact number, that they have cleaned, that they will not clean any other tanks.
And you know that to be true, why? If you've been told that or heard that?
That's what I've been, as in, I go to every residents' meeting.
Yeah.
As in, I meet with Kadia as a councillor as well because they do meet with Blanishire Council quite regularly and without outlining anything that's, you know, commercial confidence that's outlined, but in the community meetings, they've outlined, I think it was about 20 tanks, off the top of my memory, that they have cleaned because of high levels of point of use, from what I understand, in those tanks.
And just out of time, I might have to add this, my last or almost last question. With respect to the timeline in your submission, we've got 2018 as being the sort of key marker of these issues you go on to describe in your submission. Now, the, the mine's operated before that time, obviously. Have you been a resident in the same place in that period pre-2018?
Yes, we were. We've been 11, 11, I think it's 11 years, so we've been a resident.
So, with respect to the period between whenever you moved there in 2018, you don't comment about that in your submission, I'm not critical of that, but what happened during that period? Were there issues with dust and related matters or...?
So, when they dried out the tailings dam, there were some issues because they had to, you have to dry out, under their old raising of the tailings dam walls, you have to dry the dam wall out before you raise it. You can't just, because they're putting dam material on top of wet tailings, you can't do that. So, they're putting it on top of dry. 2018, March was the critical point when the tailings dam wall, the northern tailings dam wall failed. They still haven't been able to fix it, they have no indication. They've told the community varying things from, we can't fix it because it's unsafe to fix it, through to, and you can ask the question this afternoon, what their latest intentions are, through to, we're still looking at ways to potentially fix it. The indication, again, in going to the community meetings, is that they're looking at raising the southern tailings dam wall up to the height of the northern and enduring the failure in the southern tailings dam, so that eventually that's what fixes the problem, is that they raise quite considerably the height of the southern dam over the next 20 or so years if they get another mine licence, because their licence only goes till 2031, I think it's June 30, 2031, before they have to reapply. And there will be a new application, I believe, but again, you have to ask the company that, not me.
And thank you very much. Just my final question. In terms of testing, you obviously had some pretty detailed testing done, blood testing. To the best of your knowledge, have there been any residents in and around the mine or around the mine that have had tests paid for by the company?
So, what we did, as in, the third round of testing, the company did, including the soil sample testing, so they did soil sample plus water testing. That's the only round of testing I believe that, I understand that Kadia did. So, we paid for the, well, sorry, the first round of testing didn't cost us anything from the University of Western Sydney. The second round, we paid as a family. The third round, Kadia has paid for that testing.
And that was blood testing?
So, no, the blood testing, I had to pay several hundred dollars personally for blood testing, so that's water testing. So, blood testing, no, we've had to pay ourselves as individuals. Kadia has, or no one else, Health Department hasn't made it available and personally, I had to pay for the test results for the copper and also the recent test results that I believe have been provided in the submission from the Kadia network.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you both for being here. Just a question for you, Mr. Pearce, if I may. The, the water that is going to Kadia, that's no longer going to the creek, that, as I understand it, is effluent, would that be able to be used on your crops without further treatment?
Yes, we believe so, yep. That water, I believe, is only one step away from being potable for human use, one treatment step, so it's pretty good water.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Reynolds, the water, the reverse osmosis purification that you've put in, you've got clean water now?
I believe so. As in, the testing that we've had and as I said, there's two levels of, or there's three levels of filtration, so with regard to the first flush and then these big filters that we've got that take out certain heavier metals and then the reverse osmosis takes out the final. So, which, particularly with bathing, et cetera, washing clothes, so most of the heavier metals are filtered out, but for drinking, because it's coming into your body, we went that final step of the reverse osmosis system.
And have you had recent testing, you and your family, to what levels you have in your blood?
So, yes, the test results that came back showed that my copper levels had lowered, which was really good. I've spoken to the GP and that's really good. But it also showed that, now, it was molybdenum and nickel, I think, were at very high levels and we'd never tested for those heavy metals before. So, I don't know what was there six months ago, as in, whether I had above safe levels of those two heavy metals, but now everything has come back. A couple of them are right up at the top, but still they've come back within. But I also don't think it's, it's great that I've still got three sort of heavy metals at quite high levels, even though they are now considered under the safe for individual metals in my bloodstream.
But in terms of possible remediation or management, what you've done is demonstrate a way that, a possible way of management of this issue?
A very expensive way, but yes, a possible way, but as I highlighted, we also had to go overseas to get expert advice to, on what was the best system to put in. And even Kadia, and I asked Kadia the question back many months ago at a community meeting, you know, what are you coming up with, with the solutions? And they were looking at partial solutions, but not the, the solution that we went down to, went for with, with drinking water, which we believe is, is the safest route. So, hopefully, as in, because I've got a 10 year old, so she's quite young, I don't want, you know, as in, hopefully she's got a long life in front of her and you don't want heavy metals to actually create issues with her health.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. It's, it's one o'clock. The committee members may have additional questions for you on notice and the secretary will be in touch with you about those. Thank you both so much for the, the time you've taken today to give your evidence and also to prepare your submissions, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.